Good evening Bloomfield. We will now stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we have council roll call. Councillor Oliver.
Present.
Councillor Cooper.
Present.
Councillor McClary.
Present.
Councillor Mahon.
Here.
Councillor Merritt. Deputy Mayor Cindy Lloyd.
Present.
And Mayor Anthony Harrington is present. Thank you very much. We are just missing one councillor and she may very well come online later on during the meeting. Announcements and presentations. So what I wanted to do before we take a moment of silence because today is September 11th and it was horrendous day 24 years ago. And I just want to briefly mention that last week I attended the remembrance event in Westport for the 17 or 18th time since it occurred. There are 161 Connecticut residents that perished that day and two weeks after this occurred, we came out with a recording. It was God Bless America. I decided not to play it tonight. It's, you know, pretty emotional time. So what I did want to do was to ask us to just take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Our first announcement and presentation is in reference to the Sunday recognition and I believe Paula Jones will come and deliver. The president.
Thank you. Proclamation. Sunshines on Bloomfield, September 20th, 2025. Whereas we want a clean and healthy future for ourselves and future generations and whereas solar energy has become the most affordable source of power on the planet and whereas in 2024, solar power added more new capacity to the US electric grid than any other energy source in the past 20 years and whereas in order to achieve a carbon friendly world for all, we must increase the pace of adoption of solar power and other sources of clean energy and whereas implementing energy efficiency and clean energy programs supports economic growth, creates new jobs and strengthens our commitment to a sustainable future and whereas a national network of organizations has declared September 20th to 21st, 2025 as Sunday, a celebration and call to action to expand solar and wind power and reduce dependence on fossil fuels and whereas cities and towns and cities, faith communities, grassroots groups, clean energy experts, solar industry and worker organizations, schools, housing advocates, farmers and artists will join together on Sunday to celebrate the promise of renewable energy, engage others in the clean energy movement and encourage a transition away from fossil fuels and whereas the residents of Bloomfield can continue to advance their town's sustainability efforts by learning more about renewable energy and practicing smart energy use in their daily lives. Now therefore, I, Anthony C. Harrington, do hereby proclaim September 20th, 2025 as Bloomfield Sunday Celebration, known as Sunshines on Bloomfield and I urge all residents to participate in the events planned for that day and to take action in support of clean energy practices for the well-being of our community and future generations. Dated at Bloomfield, Connecticut, this 11th day of September, 2025, Anthony C. Harrington, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
And I'll say a few words during the citizen statements period about the events in Bloomfield. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. And at this time, we will have an announcement of a couple of appointed Bloomfield residents to the Design Review Board. I have made the selection or approved the selection of Dale Bertoldi and Stephen Dewey, both architects and both residents of the town of Bloomfield. Thank you, thank you. We will now have a presentation. Tax abatement for the Arbella at Blue Hills, Town Manager Alvin D. Swap and Arbella Representative Jeff Smetana.
Hey, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, citizens of Bloomfield and I'm hoping everyone is doing well this evening. I am pleased to be in a position where I believe for the first time in several months, we are making some significant positive traction with Arbella and and we're right at that point where I believe we can perhaps cross that finish line tonight if Council so agrees. But before I do so, I'd just like to know, let everyone know that a lot of work was had this week. I'd say at least five hours of my time, five, six hours of my time was spent with staff, Attorney Crumbie, Attorney Moore and Goman in York and Mr. Smetana as well. And very constructive dialogue got us to a place where we're at now and but nothing truly would have gotten us to this point if it was for not the leadership of our council. So I am very grateful for Mr. Mayor and Deputy Mayor as well as Councillors McClary and Councillors Oliver as well. Your ability to provide the direction that you thought was most effective to us as a staff to get us to this point was critical and essential to what I believe will be our success, which will be had soon and will benefit our community by great measures. So I thank you all as our leadership and I thank all the players involved and I couldn't be more satisfied with where we are now as opposed to where we were at this time last week. So with that said, I would like to begin the slideshow. If you can please present the slides. And I want to make sure we have the latest slide deck. I'm hoping that Ms. Rogers was provided with the latest slide deck.
She doesn't have it.
Okay, I'll go ahead and email it to her right now. My apologies for that not being received to you earlier. I'll go ahead and send it right now. Actually, I don't know if I have the latest one because yeah, Anatasha, did you send? Let me see. I'll go ahead and send this right now.
While we're waiting, if I could just kind of echo the Town Manager's words as well, we understand how much time and effort everyone in the town has put into this council and the leadership provided. We greatly appreciate it as well. He explained it well, just a very sincere effort to make something really positive happen and we're grateful for all that. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just making a quick change on this and then we'll be ready to go. We apologize for not being better prepared.
While we're waiting, I just want to say congratulations to our team over the past week and I'd also like to extend our thanks and appreciation to Row B who fought hard and it's now time for everyone to come together. And I think we have some really, really great things in store for us in this town over the next two years and I believe the Town Manager may be ready. I just wanted to say that we appreciate all of your efforts and we can't wait to get to work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sending this right now to Ms. Rogers.
And attention residents, ready until we get the report ready to present.
Was that received yet, Ms. Rogers? Okay. Thank you. So just to provide an update on the project itself, for those who may be first time listeners, Arbella at Blue Hills is an active senior residential housing project that's going to be occurring at 871 Blue Hills Avenue, also known as in the past as Blue Hills Drive-In. It's going to be 164 units. The developer, United Group of Companies, LLC, is the developer that's going to be investing in Bloomfield. They have an extensive track record of successful developments of the same type and they do have their financing committed in place to make this happen. This project right here is $72 million capital investment in our town and it does not have any benefit of any federal or state funding. Next slide, please. What we have here for you is the initial proposed tax abatement as submitted to make this project happen with the assistance of the town, right? And they first came in and were requesting seven years with 75% initial year abatement, reduced by 5% each year. And with that, they would provide 17 affordable housing units, which would be eight one-bedroom units, eight two-bedroom units and one town home. Course of action number two, based on requests of council, is for them to consider more affordable housing units and with that we would be looking at a 10-year abatement term with a 90% initial year abatement reduced by 5% each year. And that would give us 21 affordable units, 12 one-bedroom units, eight two-bedroom units and one town home. We wanted to give you another COA to consider. This one reduces the amount of affordable units, but as Mr. Hill will soon tell you, the financial benefit of this to the town. But this right here gives us a 10-year, this would allow the town to give Arbella a 10-year term, 87% initial year abatement reduced by 5% each year and that would provide us with 19 affordable units, which would be eight one-bedroom units. We would actually go up from eight to 10 two-bedroom units and one town home. So there was legitimate and necessary inquiry of the finances related to this to make this abatement make sense to us as a town and to our taxpayers. And I had asked Mr. Darrell Hill to engage in discussions with Mr. Smetana as well as Goman in York to ensure that we were on stable footing with this type of abatement agreement. And he did extensive research utilizing the figures provided from Goman in York. And I would ask him now to come to the mic, please, and provide his analysis of that extensive review and let the public know which one of these COAs is best for our town's interests. So Mr. Hill, can please present, sir?
Thank you, Manager. Good evening, Council and Bloomfield. Of the three alternatives shown, the initial, I refer to them as initial COA 1 and COA 2. Each of them are positive as has been discussed previously to Bloomfield, but to put some metrics to it. The base case over the abatement period, which is a seven-year period, generates approximately $2.7 million of revenue for the town. So that $2.7 million is spread over the seven-year abatement period and with the abatement, it actually grows each year as the abatement falls off. COA 1 generates approximately $3.3 million, so roughly $600,000 higher than the initial case over a 10-year period. Similarly, in all of the options are the same because the abatement starts at one level and declines annually. So the numbers I'm referring to are over the life of the abatement. So again, COA 1 generates approximately $3.3 million over the 10-year abatement period. Similarly, COA 2 generates slightly higher at $3.5 million of revenue to the town over the 10-year abatement period. So to summarize, the initial abatement period generates $2.7 million. COA 1 generates approximately $600,000 more than the initial case at 3.3 million and COA 2 generates about $200,000 higher than COA 1 at $3.5 million over the abatement period. All of that is positive to Bloomfield. I believe each scenario starts at in year one, a couple of hundred thousand and then grows roughly by about $100,000 each year of positive revenue to the town. In each of the alternatives, the initial COA 1, COA 2, at the end of the abatement period, we're generating, the project would be generating about a million dollars annually to the town. In the initial alternative, because it's a seven-year period, it's slightly lower, but only by, I believe it's less than $100,000, so $930,000 or so, excuse me. And then for the 10-year scenarios, at the 10-year abatement scenarios, in year 11, it's generating, I believe it's just under $1.1 million annually to the town. So I believe the question was which of the scenarios, or the statement was which of the scenarios generates the most positive benefit to the town and that would be COA 2 generating the 3.5 million over the 10-year period. In my meeting with our consultants, Goman in York, and reviewing the financial analysis provided by the developer to Goman in York that they've evaluated, my review of the, and I think the question was about the returns of the project, was actually pleasantly surprised to see that, you know, it actually takes a step back and over the past 30-plus years, I've worked on a variety of projects, residential stadiums, commercial, up and down the East Coast and have seen returns on all of those projects in various shapes and forms. And the returns that were shared with me for this project, I would characterize as reasonable and less than the average of what I've seen throughout my career. And not just a little bit less, about a third less than the average of what I've seen throughout my career. I don't believe that there's anyone that would, with experience, that would suggest that the returns this project is generating for its investors would be over and above what is normal. I think in the current markets with all this going on in the world, emerging markets and the attempts to identify higher returns, that this is a solid proposal for Bloomfield with investors receiving a reasonable return on their investment. And I welcome any questions that the councillor has.
Director Hill. Oh, thank you. Director Hill, you said, what's the initial property tax abatement proposal, that revenue number? That's not something I got.
Over the seven-year abatement period, it's approximately 2.7 million.
Okay. And if that were done, it's 75% down. Initially, in the initial year, what would be the tax that would be abated and what would the town receive?
Tax that would be abated and what would the town receive? The town would receive in year one of the initial alternative, just over $210,000 of tax revenue and the abatement approximates $670,000.
About the building permits?
Building permits come in before construction and I believe the slide suggested that the building permits would be in excess of $1 million. So during the 18-month or so construction period, the town would receive about a million dollars or a little over a million dollars.
And that's just licenses, fees and things?
Building permits and yes, for the construction of the project, not tax revenue.
Okay. So with that scenario and I'm sorry, I just, these, there's going to be similar questions for COA 1 and 2?
Similarly, the, that's, I want to get to, actually. Abatement at 75, the abatement at 75. Actually, I do not have the COA 1 and COA 2 scenarios with me. What I have is the initial over a seven and a 10-year period. The, let's see if I can, my good recall and retention can pull it up or if Jeff or I believe Denise is on, if they have the numbers in front of them. Abatement going down to?
Does Goman in York have that information?
Yes.
Goman in York on the line?
Actually, if you can elevate Brad, he has those.
Thank you.
India, thank you.
Yeah, I have the numbers in aggregate over the period, over the abatement period. I don't have all of the individual years with me. But Brad is, was in my meeting and has all of the detail.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, Brad. Or welcome, I should say. You were with us all this time. But did you understand the question being asked by Councillor Cooper?
If you could repeat the question, that'd be great, please.
So I asked what would be the abatement over that time period and it was the abatement and the?
So in COA 1, what is the value of the tax revenue coming to the town in year one and how much is being abated?
Okay, in year one of COA 1?
Yes.
The amount being abated is approximately 800,000. The net annual revenue to the town in that year would be approximately 90,000. And the cumulative 10-year period for that scenario?
Yeah.
The amount that would be abated would be approximately 6.5 and the total revenue to the?
I'm sorry.
Period is about 4.2.
I'm going to ask you, could you repeat that start one more time?
Yes, was that for the?
COA 1 and then COA 2?
For the cumulative 10-year or for the first year?
Just for the first year.
Just for the first year. So for the first year for COA 1, the annual abated amount is approximately 800,000. The net annual revenue is approximately 90,000. For COA 2 on the initial year, the abated amount is approximately 780 with the net annual revenue to the town at approximately 116,000.
Right. Is that something you can present? Are you able to do that?
That would be up to the Town Manager.
That would be up to the Town Council.
Is the desire to see what each scenario generates without the abatement and with the abatement?
That would be great.
By year or in aggregate?
Well, if we do it by year and we have the, what is the mill rate that we're using? Because initially, there was a mill rate of 31, right? And so?
We do have that scenario.
Yeah, because you know Bloomfield is never going to have a mill rate of 31.
Or 41.
Or 41, right. Thanks, Counsel.
Right. So the analysis has been run with the current mill rate and then with the 31 mill rate, right? We all know that we're in the midst of phasing in revow and over the next three years, we'll phase in the remaining 75% of the 2024 revow, but we'll also have increases based on the operating budget needs. So while yes, we can make a variety of assumptions on top of all of the assumptions that are already baked into the model, right? For demonstration purposes, I think it's easier to digest if we hold it constant, right? Because we know that with equalization, as we add in the 25% each year and equalize, even though the mill rate is changing, revenue generation stays the same.
Right.
So looking at it with a bunch of assumptions about phasing in and what the mill rate's going to be over the, not only the next three years, but the next seven to 10 years, right? Adds a level of complexity.
I do and I understand, but Mr. Mayor, maybe through you, we can, I'm going to ask if we can have our finance chair, because the question is, we know that there is not going to be a 31.
Can I just, through you, Mr. Mayor, can I just take over if you don't mind, Mr. Councillor? Should I explain?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. is fine, but the councillor is great.
Thank you. So I think what he's saying, because we had discussions on the model that was presented to us by Gorman New York, that I think after discussion with you, Mr. Hill, having conversations with Arbella, the mayor, the deputy mayor, the town manager, I feel confident in that we're going to ultimately reach a deal, right? But I think for the public's transparency perspective, I think what the councillor is asking is the model. So the models that we were presented was when we went through the four-year phase-in and the tax calculator, when you go to the tax calculator online to Bloomfield, ct.gov, you go to the tax calculator, we put a 3% budget growth and each year, we equalize the mill rate. And from year one to year four, I think at year four, it shows us having a mill rate of 31 after the new value of the assessed property is added to the grant list excluding the exemptions. They have us at a 31 mill rate with a 3% increase. The model that Gorman New York presented to us at the end of four years have us at a 41 mill rate and they did a two-year inflationary result. So on one end, somebody's either understating or on the other end, somebody's overstating the amount of tax generated revenue. And so what I think the councillor is asking is, based on this model and based on the $2.7 million and the extra $200,000 that you based on this model and based on the two point seven million dollars and the extra two hundred thousand dollars that you presented in CO two that you said the town is gonna get during the abatement, plus the additional million dollars extra after the abatement is over. We would just like to see an exhibit, and I think it would be in the best interest of the the town, to see the exhibit of the model so that when we get to public hearing, we don't face criticism of is is that what you're asking for?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
That is.
Just try to help out. Thank you. But I think we'll get to a deal. I think it's it's a good thing for Bloomfield.
Sure, I thank you for that. That that's helpful.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Yeah, to my and hopefully the general public's understanding, I uh we we can work towards preparing that information and have it it available uh before any subsequent meetings. Um, you know, to try and simplify things, and this is consistent with what I believe I said in Finance Committee. We're we're looking and what the council has to decide on is from where we are now. Which is the subject property is generating twelve thousand dollars. Right? And I I see all the nodding heads, yes, yes, we know, we know, we know. Right? But what we're doing is we're multiplying that. And whether that twelve thousand becomes a hundred thousand in year one or two hundred thousand in year one, it's not twelve thousand. And it grows every year. So much so that at the end of the abatement period, we're up around a million dollars, if not over a million dollars, right? Compared to where we are now. And council's decision will be to decide whether or not we continue with the twelve to sixteen thousand dollars that's being generated now. Uh, and we build this project and bend that curve a little bit. Or uh I won't even use a negative word about this project. Uh, but if we don't, then we'll continue at that twelve to six thousand, sixteen thousand dollar level until we identify another developer for the site. And no one knows how long that will be. All of that time, all of our residents and the council representing them that are concerned about what this project is generating would not have any benefit.
Counselor Lloyd.
Um, Counselor McCleary, so are are we asking for that model by the next public hearing for a year by year breakdown so the public is clear on the would have been collected amount, the abated amount and the net collection? Is that for the next meeting?
Uh, through you, Mr. Uh, Mayor, to the Deputy Mayor, I think just for the public, just put the exhibit out so that people who wanna respond to or make comments at the public hearing related to this deal, it's out there for them so that they have the information. Just it's just it's just a simple exhibit to provide clarity to the public. That's it. It's not that we don't we don't get that this is gonna produce extra revenue. We just want clarity so that the public can be able to articulate their concerns on their lack of concerns or no concerns for clarity and transparent purposes. It seems like you already have it with Gorman New York, so just provide the exhibit and show the model and that you're using and the assumptions that you're using, I think will be fine.
Are you looking for all three exhibits for the initial COA one and COA two, or is there one of them that you would like to see?
I just think for comparison purposes and clear, through you, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay. What do you have? You you ran some type of analysis on each of the 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 scenarios to show what type of benefit it's gonna have on taxes. So whatever scenario and exhibit you use to run your analysis, just make it public so that people can see it. So that there's no questions asked or no innuendos or conspiracies like anything. So if Brad has whatever scenarios he ran, we'd just like to see what mill rates he used, what assumptions he used for each of the the proposals so that the public can comment on it, don't publish it.
Sure, Brad is a talented young man and I don't know how much time we uh have for him to try and pull that together during this meeting, but uh Brad, if you could, um, looking for the three, initial COA one, COA two, with exclusively the tax generated without the abatement line, the abatement and then the net revenue to the town. So those three lines for the seven year period for initial and ten year period for COA one and COA two. Uh, if I understand correctly, Counselor McCleary, that is uh the information that is being asked for.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think for the public, I think that would be good. We show the assumptions cuz as I mentioned in my previous statement earlier, the tax calculator on the town council's web on the website says one thing, and I know there are gonna be people out there who are going to look at that tax calculator. And there's gonna be people gonna look at this model and say who's overstating and who's understating. And so just make sure that it is consistent with our models and that our numbers are correct so that nobody accuses us of lying to the public or misrepresenting the phase in increase over the last period. And I think at the last Finance Committee meeting, that's all I was trying to articulate is just show the the difference, right? Like if we said over the next four years, the town said this, not me. On the tax calculator that our mill rate over four years, these are estimates, not including the fire district with a three percent growth. At the end of that four years, it has our mill rate based on my assessed value at thirty one mill rates. When I looked at the assessment that Gorman New York provided for this, it has us at the end of the four years at a forty one percent a forty one mill rate. And so if they're using that, somebody's even understating by ten mill rate points or understating overstating by ten basis, ten ten basis points. That's all I'm just, and I think that's what you were asking for too, is just to see with it and without it, using the forecast and.
Thank.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, we have actually three counselors that are looking to speak. Counselor Mahan, we're gonna, we're gonna wait just one bit for uh Counselor Merritt. He has had his hand up uh a while and then we'll go with you and then followed by uh yes, uh Counselor Cooper.
I have to say, I find uh what's being said about ridiculous. I I'm sorry, I just feel that way. Some, what was it, eight years ago? Uh, we had our first primary flip of the council. And uh some people came in who were against economic development. And we have have since then had had very little economic development initiated by the council. Um, we have not supported. Um, we have heyday of economic development before that. And I'm appalled at the attitude, the anti-economic development attitude we have on the council now. It it holds no advantage for the town. Here, assuming we're going to get all this tax money if we we don't give away. I'm sorry, that's ridiculous. If you don't have, if a company doesn't come to town, you get nothing. And that's always the deal. I was convinced when these people came, they were to going to develop a something very good for the town in a spot where no development has happened for fifty years. It's been empty. It's empty a lot. It's a place of towns that could use some upbeat development. And it's also, it is an upbeat development. There's all positives. It's it's for senior housing, which we really can use. They have agreed to give some lower cost uh apartments. And they have agreed to other things. But we keep stressing and saying, oh, we don't wanna give you any abatement. I mean, that's what it amounts to. The abatement was necessary cuz their expenses were laying much higher as ours did. Building expenses have skyrocketed and the the money, financial uh cost has gone up way high. We had experienced that with library. Where things cost two or three times as much as it did a few years ago. And so we have to understand that. And I think we're going into a period where we're going to have we're going to have to help companies if you want, if if we want them to come to town. We're just going to and and this is not an unreasonable request that we're making of them. And to try to get anymore, you you're just trying to get blood from a stone. It's just not in the interest of the town. And I I I know I I I look back favorably when we had all that development back some ten, twelve years ago. It comes and it goes. There's periods of development and periods without it. And all we've been getting recently is apartments proved to be very profitable and people did well. We gave an abatement fault we shouldn't have given to the ones at Cigna and the ones in the center. And so, and I remember telling the town manager back when we gave the first ones out I we we could have fired him for that. The thinking then was you don't give abatements to apartments. And I I just feel that we went and gave them again to another planner at the time who departed soon after. Promised an abatement to the center apartments. And I I I was appalled because I wasn't very happy about those apartments. But the thinking towards apartments has changed. Anyway, so we, after that, we just stopped giving abatements to apartments. And then I think that was justified because the times, they knew that they were gonna make a lot of money on them because everybody else had. But now they, that's changing. And I I don't think it's an automatic buck when you uh that apartments had. And there was not much else economic development during the last eight years. So we've been living off the fat of our land. But it's it's going to change if we don't have an attitude where we want. The reason for the abatement is to track them to town, not to get you're you're taking away from the abatement everything you require of them to to give up. And it's just unreasonable. And you're you're challenging their their bookkeeping. It's just I almost unprincipled. So I I just hope we get off this. I just, I'm ready to walk out. I'm sorry. I just feel very badly about this.
Thank you, Counselor Merritt. We'll now move to Counselor Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, actually, I was going to express some of the sentiments that uh Counselor Merritt expressed, just more on the line of uh the fact that this can be very beneficial for the town, the increased tax revenue. Uh, but in addition to that, the um the increased units available uh uh for housing, especially um especially uh housing, affordable housing uh for senior uh our senior residents here in Bloomfield. Um, I don't think from from what it sounds like, it doesn't seem like folks are really hung up on the um whether we should uh award an abatement or not. I think I I think that was an initial concern, but I I doesn't sound like that's a concern currently, uh Counselor Merritt. Uh, what it does sound like, and and I agree with this as well, uh with Counselor Cooper and um and uh and Counselor McCleary, is that we should be able to provide all of these numbers and figures to the community so that when they are present at the public hearing, they can speak from an informed place. Uh, we wanna make sure all this information is upfront. You guys know that I am a hundred and ten percent for transparency. I shouted at the mountaintops. Um, if we can, I agree, we should make sure this information is on. The question that I had is how quickly can we get this information out to the community? Because we should have it out before the public hearing. Um, not at the public hearing, but before so our residents have some time to digest the information. Um, and if it'd be possible for us to also get it out in a shareable um in a shareable format on Facebook, because that's another way that a lot of our residents um interact and engage in our democracy. So I just just had those two questions. How quickly can we get it out and can we get it out on our um town social media?
Thank you. Now, I know uh Counselor Cooper, you were planned to be next, but uh Deputy Deputy Mayor hasn't had a bite at the bullet yet. Okay.
Can I get an answer to my questions first?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thought you were done.
Yeah, no, sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just, I would just hope I can get an answer to my question then, by all means.
Well, we'll note it to the town manager. Is that okay?
Not really the answer I was looking for, but um do we know when I'll be, do we know when I'll be able to get an answer?
Um, CFO Hill is is prepared to address that, please.
If I understand it correctly, uh Counselor Mahan, your questions about when the information will be ready?
Yeah, when? And then uh it was another question, I think it was more for um for India on how can we get this out through our social media channels? But yes, when is the initial question?
Um, so we uh i- if you've been on the meeting, um our consultant at Gorman New York is working on preparing the meeting now, hopefully uh before we're done discussing it. So that would be tonight.
I did, I did hear that, but I know you also said that he's very talented, but you didn't know if he had the time, so I.
He's he's working on it right now.
Okay, all right.
And hopefully tonight we'll have it. Now, as far as social media, not a fan. Um, if it is ready tonight, we're gonna project it on the screen and folks can see it uh in during this meeting.
It's okay, uh Director Hill, that question was more for India, but I do appreciate you taking a stab at the second question.
Okay, I apologize. I didn't hear you indicate who the question was for.
I can, I can step in here and say the Director of Operations and Communications answers to me. So while I will make sure that that information is put on the town's social media website as as soon as we have it and and are able to uh uh check and double check to ensure the accuracy of the information, uh we will put it out.
Thank you, Town Manager.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Cooper?
Thank you, uh Mayor. I'll I'll be very brief. Um, Counselor, I just wanna address um Counselor Merritt just for a moment. I'm I'm sorry that you're disappointed, Counselor Merritt. Um, I am uh actually for business uh in this town. I know that we're going to have to have a balance uh of the burden of tax, tax shares on um residents and businesses. Uh, I just, the only questions I was asking was so that um our residents could see what the benefit is for the town. Whatever we do here is for the benefit of the town, right? For everyone here. And so that's the only reason my questions were directed uh in that way. Um, we, I know that uh, or I believe that, you know, once this information goes out and folks get to see it, um, they will probably advocate for it also. Uh, housing units for uh folks who are in the town, two bedroom units for people who are in the town. But people need to see that sort of um information. So it is not that um, you know, I'm against it or that I don't believe in economic development. But um to, just to to be open and honest and for full transparency, there are some folks who will use the information in a negative way, whether you give it to them or you don't give it to them. I would rather get out in front of that and make sure that they have it so that folks see that there is a benefit to the town of Bloomfield and to them. It may take a moment. It may take a moment, but um certainly will be, everything will be accomplished, I think, and it's done. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick point of note. We have several more questions uh by counselors and we have a long agenda. Could we try to be just as concise as we can as we move forward? Uh, Counsel Oliver?
Thank you, Merrick Harrington. Um, yes, I mean, I I I'm I'm for development in the right areas of Bloomfield that, you know, don't create too much of a hindrance to the views. Uh, but you know, I'm not, I'm not technically a big fan of abatement, uh unless there's something given back to Bloomfield, right? Um, if we're gonna be giving up uh millions in income of taxes, then there, you know, there should be some type of assistance back to the town, whether it's through employees working or through Bloomfield-based companies. Um, so I'm just hoping that uh we can take that into consideration when we're um talking about all this.
Thank you. Counselor McCleary?
Thank you. Um, so a few things, and I'm gonna be very brief. You know, we're getting more units because originally when this was proposed, they came through the TPZ. They wasn't asking for an abatement. Uh, they even said, I went back and watched the meeting for TPZ. They even said that, oh, you only required ten percent. If you would have asked for more affordable housing, we would have given you more affordable housing. At that point, it was a private deal in the private market using private capital. Capital stack was private, had no government subsidies a part of it. The minute a private organization comes and asks for public subsidies, we have an obligation as the fiduciary responsible for the town of Bloomfield and the twenty two thousand people who pay their taxes. You know, I see the Housing Authority Chair here. He's been looking for a ton of money to put housing and affordable housing here, even when I got a nonprofit designation so that he can do so. We have an obligation to, like as Counsel Oliver said, to make sure that we have a community benefit agreement a part of this. If we're gonna leave, cuz there's no such thing as a free meal, right? There's no such thing as a free meal. In the last revow, a four percent shift happened. And I can attest if we do the. And I can attest, if we do the research and do a white paper, that that 4% shift came from us over the last 10 years doing abatements on organizations in this community. And we didn't get any community benefit from it. And now our residents are dealing with the shift. And so you got doggone right, I'm going to make sure that I get every penny I can if you ask for a public subsidy, because we don't have to do this to spur economic development. Giving away tax abatements don't spur economic development. What spurs economic development is giving tax abatements what community benefits. That's what spurs it. Because we're going to get jobs for our employees, we're going, our employees and our residents, we're going to get affordable housing based on the annual income. They came in initially with 17, they're moving up to 19 units, which is really, really, really good. And that's because we push for it because they ask for a tax subsidy. No one up here is against, uh, economic development because we all just went through a very tough budget year and we understand the need for additional revenue. All revenue isn't good, you have to balance it with the needs of the people and it has to be smart. And I think where we're going to eventually end up will be smart. At this point, the discussion is, should the public see it or not, right? We can just move on and grant that abatement without showing the, the details to the public. What this discussion is about, Councilor Merritt, is not that we don't want the abatement, it's about showing the details so that our residents can additionally feel the way we feel now. They see the information and they feel that the revenues and the expenditures are matching up so that we can give this tax abatement, they can begin construction over two years, we can get 10% of our Bloomfield-based companies there, we can get the additional units. And when you get to the doors or when you have a conversation at the local restaurants, you can tell the residents why it's a good deal for them and you can point them to the website as, here's the information, you can go read it for yourself. So I look forward to the rest of the presentation and moving this to public hearing.
Thank you. We have one last question before we move on to the next section. Councilor Mahan? Was that a legacy hand? Must be, okay. So we are going to move forward.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. No, I didn't realize I was on mute. I'm sorry. My apologies. Um, yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you, thank you very much. Um, and I just want to, my apologies to Councilor Merritt, I misunderstood. I thought everyone was beyond this. I, it's kind of disheartening to hear that there is still some hesitance here in a, in a time where we went through such a tough budget period where, you know, this, having this economic development and, um, a, you know, a development, um, uh, injecting this amount of funds into our, uh, into our tax base, even with the abatement. It, it's discouraging to hear that some of my colleagues are still so hesitant about having, um, having economic development in our community. I'm, I, I'm joining you in these concerns and I didn't realize that folks were still hung up on that. Hopefully, hopefully that changes, but, you know, ultimately tonight, we're just deciding to move this to a public hearing. We can always debate the merit of it, um, at, at the, at that following meeting. But, uh, tonight we're deciding whether the public gets to speak on it and I think they should.
Thank you. Uh, we do have one last, and that'll be Deputy Mayor Cindy Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I will start by saying there is no one on the dais that does want, does not want to give great consideration to this project. What is being asked for is for a clear, concise picture of what the abatement looks like and the impact to Bloomfield. The net and what is perceived as the losses. But when you're getting more than $13,000 a year, have you lost anything? You really have not. It, it's a plus-plus, no matter how you slice it. However, there have been times in the past where residents have been made to feel that we're giving away the farm, right? With no mutual benefit to Bloomfield and the residents. So I will state that many of my constituents have come to me saying they don't want it, but those are the same folks that are saying they want good business development because they need it as they understand it will help to offset or reduce their residential taxes. So it's fair and prudent to give them a full picture of the projections so that they understand. We will have it in your hands, we will have it on the website, we will have it on our Facebook page for your perusal. So when you come to a public hearing, we will all be on the same page. I think this is a good project for Bloomfield. It is not, um, pulling on the school district. And what no one else has mentioned besides the revenue from the increased taxes, albeit not the same as we would have without an abatement, there's going to be motor vehicle taxes generated off of this as well. And not even to speak of the million dollars in the first year on building permits. And then the incremental raise on taxes, even with an abatement, which far exceed what we're getting now. So for the residents who are listening, understand and know that this will offset in a small way your residential taxes. And at the end of the abatement year, it will significantly lend itself to further reducing and offsetting your taxes. And this project, as well as others, that we will consider in the future for good development for Bloomfield, with our values in mind, is going to be a plus, plus, plus going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for this spirited debate. That is, that concludes the presentation. Now we will have citizen statements and petitions. So statements by members of the public may be oral or written and shall start with the speaker's name and address and shall continue for no longer than three minutes, unless permitted by the mayor or counselor presiding.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, there was actually one more slide to the presentation and, and I wanted to be respectful to, to our guest, uh, Jess Metano. If you would like to hear the final slide, we can, we can do so. He wanted to discuss, um, some other aspects of the agreement that we're working on so that, um, that the council can determine about, uh, can find a means to, um, push one, one sticking point to committee for further consideration. If you'd like to continue the presentation, we can do so.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And, uh, what I'll ask is, uh, Jeff, to please come and, uh, we'll say next slide and then I will close this out. Thank you. Can we have the next slide? It should be a slide three after that.
Is that it? Okay, that was all, thank you.
There was no other slide?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Okay, there it is. But again, just echoing the comment from the mayor that we appreciate the lively debate. Certainly, uh, abatements are, um, always a, um, significant consideration for a town, but they are a tool to facilitate development, the kind of development you would like in your town and the locations that you would like, um, to have it. And hopefully we're representative of, of some of the positive that an abatement can really facilitate for a town. So this shows some of the, um, uh, benefits that the project does indeed provide, the senior housing, um, and that, um, we, we don't have a, a significant impact on the schools. Also, that our residents are, um, local, uh, they will come from, uh, the community where we're based, as opposed to market-rate apartments where someone may be living, um, far away. The great majority of our residents are coming within a, a few miles and most of those residents are homeowners, they'll be selling a home. So then that's turning over, uh, uh, single-family housing stock that maybe otherwise wouldn't have been on the market. So then it opens, opens up other opportunities for, um, for other folks, uh, young families to buy. And it has been discussed, the site is, um, has been vacant for over 50 years. It has challenges, uh, largely because of the traffic that's there. Our property is a, um, low-traffic, uh, uh, user, low, low-traffic impact. Uh, so a big retail user, a lot of the other commercial uses there have not been, uh, workable. So we are indeed, um, uh, the highest and best use, I think, that's possible for that site. And I think that's a, uh, significant consideration. And then it's been discussed, you know, the current taxes are being about $12,500. Everything above that has found, uh, revenue to the town. So everything above that is, is helpful. And the way these, um, abatement programs are structured is to allow, um, us to get our project up and going. In the first year, we might be 40% occupied. Seniors are very circumspect about, uh, uh, making these kinds of choices of to move. So it happens slower than it does for market-rate properties. So we might be 40% year one, 60, 70% in year two. So this ramp up in the abatement really helps us get up, get on our feet, get stabilized and get to where we're, um, fully occupied and then ultimately paying, uh, full taxes indefinitely into the future. And it does bullet out some of the incremental additions that, um, uh, were discussed previously by the CFO. The permits are significant, uh, we have a permit applications into the, into the town. They've calculated those amounts, um, uh, the total fees that we'll be paying are, um, a million dollars or more. And, um, I, I think that that's a significant consideration and also in terms of the jobs being generated. Been a lot of discussion about that. The construction itself, uh, $72 million of construction produces, um, produces jobs, it produces, uh, economic impact. And then we're also looking at, um, permanent jobs, um, for our property managers and assistant manager, leasing manager, maintenance staff. And, uh, we really invest in our people. We want very much to find local people that can fill those positions and give us that connectivity, uh, to the town. And then also has been discussed, uh, one of the criteria, one of the, um, requirements from the town's program is, um, uh, for a goal of 10% of construction, uh, being done by Bloomfield businesses. So, uh, we've talked a lot about how we can collaborate in terms of making that, that happen. So, uh, we really appreciate the consideration, we appreciate all the discussion. We think our, uh, project will have a significant impact, um, in Bloomfield. We're in an iconic location, a gateway location as you come into town, really welcoming people, centrally located. And our residents, I, I think will really enjoy, uh, living there. The, the affordable units at whatever, uh, level the, um, uh, the council ends up selecting, um, uh, is, are administered by a affordable housing, uh, program that's already approved by the TPZ. So that's a very comprehensive document that illustrates really well how these programs will be, uh, implemented and administered over time. And that program for those allowable, for the affordable units allows the, um, town to provide some preferences in terms of, say, Bloomfield residents, um, you know, teachers, healthcare workers, whatever, veterans, whatever the town may, uh, choose. So that's a, I think, another benefit that allows the, our project to be really focused to fill what, uh, all of you feel are the, the needs, um, for your community. So again, we appreciate the opportunity to present. We really look forward to being part of your town and, um, look forward to, uh, being here for the long term. So thank you. I don't know if there are any questions, but yes.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McClary?
So just for clarification, and this is why it's so important, because on the screen, it says first year, $160,000 in year one. But you told us earlier in the meeting that the first year is going to be 210,000 versus 670,000. And so that's why it's important for people who live and work, watching at home, they hear one thing from us and then they see another thing. And that mends the mistrust of what comes out of Town Hall. And in order for us to make sure that they feel comfortable, we have to make sure everything matches up and that the information is presented correctly. This is not to be critical. I'm leaving in a couple of weeks. I just want you to be very, very, very mindful that you said, right? You said 210,000 in the first year.
That could be a 35 mil rate versus a 31.
But that's, so to the deputy, to, to the deputy mayor's point, it could be a 35 or 34 mil rate, that's, or 31. That's why it's so important to have the numbers and the proposals out there because these folks up here are going to get the brunt of the tags from people who don't mean any good for the town. That's not to be critical, but I just want to, um, articulate that just for, uh, the public record.
And of course, that was earlier in the week, that was the number. And we've looked, you know, looked at multiple scenarios.
Yep.
Back and forth, it's been a great discussion. So whatever, whatever, um, uh, option is ultimately selected, there will be a set, uh, or at least a, um, projected amount for those taxes.
Is that based on the current mil rate or what mil rate?
We'll work with Gorman New York and the CFO as far as, we can disclose all that.
Thank you, but I'm happy to see this community benefit, very, very happy to see it.
Councilor Merritt?
Yes, I, I, I understood that we had come to some point of agreement where we could pass something tonight. And, uh, that's what I was told for this meeting. And it's, or obviously it's subject to the public hearing and we could be changing it after that. But we normally go in with a, uh, some kind of a decision for the public hearing and they, shown to them as well as all these numbers. And, uh, then they would, we respond to their comments before we finally pass the final bill. But is that true?
Uh, yes, we have more, uh, discussion on this later on. Okay. It just happens to be a very long process here. Any other questions from the council?
All right, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time and attention to this matter. We appreciate all the information you presented.
And I'd just like to say thank you again, uh, a series, uh, a number of good questions for the, the public's benefit and, and, and we've already had the model sent to us by Gorman New York. I, I thank you, Brad, for making that happen. But, uh, very good, uh, progress was made this week because of outstanding leadership of, of council and dedicated staff as, as well as the Crumbie Law Group and, and Gorman New York. So, uh, we're much better today than we were, uh, yesterday, much better than we were, you know, last week. And, and I thank everyone for that collective effort to put us in this position. Subject to your questions, uh, Mr. Mayor and, and counsel, that, that's all I have on this subject.
Thank you. And at this time, we're going to move to citizen statements and petitions. I just explained, but I'll reiterate. Statements by members of the public may be oral or written and shall start with the speaker's name and address and shall continue for no longer than three minutes, unless permitted by the mayor or counselor presiding. Given the late nature of this meeting, we will be strictly at the three-minute level. Thank you.
Bob Burnin.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, members of the town council and all candidates running for town council. I do not expect any of you to know the town charter in its entirety, but I do expect you to be familiar with the sections of the charter that pertains to council members and the position of mayor. Your oath of office contains the phrase to obey the law and follow the rules. Placing any member of the town council on a body not a council subcommittee is a violation of your oath and is a violation of the charter. Your actions in naming the mayor and a member of the minority party as members of the Housing Ordnance Committee and all other council members and ad hoc members did violate the charter. As obvious to me, as well as other residents of Bloomfield, you have not looked at the charter. One member of this council said to me that it's not the responsibility of the town council to know the charter. That is what they have their advisors for. Both the town manager, Gorman New York, and the town attorney ignored or willfully violated the charter when they drafted the ordinance on the housing. This past Friday, the mayor, the deputy mayor, and a candidate for the Board of Education violated state law regarding the 75-foot rule for candidates for public office when the polls are open. As I did years ago when the then-state representative violated this rule, I have filed a complaint with the State Election Commission. Based on these facts, which all cannot be denied, why should the citizens of Bloomfield trust you to obey your sworn oath? We have violated and continue to do so. I wonder, what is the penalty violating an oath of office? Perhaps I should ask the Attorney General of the State of Connecticut what the penalty is. Thank you.
Next.
Paula Jones.
Paula Jones, Five Bear Ridge Drive. First of all, thank you, Mayor Harrington, for giving me the honor of reading the proclamation on Sunday. I chair the Conservation Energy and I chair the Conservation, Energy, and Environment Committee, and I just wanted to give the residents a little bit more context about what this is. It's kind of a new kind of national holiday, hopefully, kind of like Earth Day, but Sunday to celebrate the power of the sun. So Bloomfield is participating in national Sunday activities. Our celebration or our observance will be on Saturday, September 20th. There's going to be a very informal event in the Town Hall parking lot, like at 9:30. You know, there'll be like an electric vehicle or vehicles here. We're inviting residents with solar installations to come by, have coffee donuts, be able to ask your fellow residents questions. And that's all a prelude for kind of a big event down at CCSU Central on Sunday, the next day, where it'll be a full day of activities, a lot of fun events. And we'll be putting information about, out about that. One of our members is also doing a reading at Wittenberry-McMahon Library for preschoolers about the sun as kind of part of that in tandem with Bloomfield Public Library. So that, that's what it's about. And I'll just finish by saying I'm one of the rabble that came in eight to 10 years ago about Niagara, about the tax abatements and the MDC discounts. One of the things that really got people fired up was the fact that it just dropped on a December agenda. It was done. It was voted on. There was no public input. I really appreciate the fact that I think there's an attempt to put enough information out there that the public can see the benefit. And I'll just say from a personal level, I think this is a great project. I think it's something the town needs. So I'm glad that the information will be made available and I look forward to the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to speak? Paul Butler. We have Mr. Paul Butler. You have the floor.
Hi, Paul Butler, City 13, Bloomfield Avenue. I just wanted to say I love conversation, love everyone's attitude, and I think it's a new day in town. An additional $3 million in tax revenue will benefit everyone in town significantly. And I'm sure you'll come to the right decision at the end of the day. And it's just been nice to observe the meeting tonight. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others that would like to speak online? Calling once, calling twice, and for the third and final time, we will move on to reports from council subcommittees. Starting first with Governance, Policy, and Economic Development, Counselor Todd E. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and for that middle initial being put in there. So the Governance Policy meeting met on September 2nd, 6 o'clock, hybrid meeting. The mayor was there, myself, and Counselor Joe Merritt. Absent was my colleague, Counselor McClary. Also in attendance, Mr. John Coleman, Director of Building and Land Use, Warren Plummer, Lynn Weisels, Recording Secretary, Deputy Mayor Cindy Lloyd, Town Manager Al Schwab, Deputy Manager Sharon Howe, Latonya Tab, our Clerk of Council, welcome, and Denise Robidell from Gorman and York, and India Rogers, our outgoing Clerk of Council, who is now the Director of Operations and Communications. So it was a very good meeting. We had Town Manager Schwab talked about the artificial turf at Bloomfield High School. There were a series of questions that we had about the replacement and the, the financial cost of the replacement. He also had a conversation with Dr. Youngberg, who, the big question that was posed was, is the town ready to replace the high school? Our deputy manager, our town, our mayor, let me get it right, also had questions about the life of the artificial turf and what would be the cost of replacing it at this time versus holding steady where, where it is. So went over the pros and cons, of course, of that. And Dr. Youngberg and her staff are in favor of the artificial because of low maintenance costs, the all-weather usability, durability, and other factors. And so if natural turf were installed, it would only be used by the varsity football team. They're the only ones who would have access to the field. And so we did ask for the financials and the pros and cons for each type. Hopefully that will be coming. And how much longer the current field will last. And it is, it was said that it's beyond the natural lifespan currently. And so, and a consultant has been retained to determine if it's possible to extend the lifespan of the field further. And then we get a price for the natural and artificial replacements. Our Mayor Harrington had a series of questions and statements certainly about how long that that turf has been there. So we'll have more updates that will be forthcoming with this replacement discussion. And so Director Coleman, sorry. Oh, Director Coleman had updates on building and land use with the town master plan. And I believe that they are going out to, to market, to look for assistance in, in getting those changes. I'm going to leave that then. And I will let you come in and, you know, please, okay? All right. Thank you, sir. Just, and our mayor, you guys are going to have to forgive me. Our town manager, there's a lot of titles here, and so I'm trying to be formal because I know everyone here by name. But our town manager did a administrative report, and that, I believe, was also coming later in the agenda, and I will let that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Finance, Budget, Audit, and Bonding, Counselor Kenneth McCleary.
Thank you so much. Due to a scheduling conflict with me being in class on Mondays, I'm taking a derivatives class on Monday, so I cannot have the finance committee meeting on September 15th. But we'll have a special meeting on Tuesday, September 16th, and we'll have an update related to, I think this is the audit and some of the building permit fees, et cetera. That's on the agenda. And I think there's two, three items on the agenda tonight that will be referred to the meeting on the 16th. And I think this is my, I have one more meeting as the finance chair before I exit, and I look forward to wrapping things up and transitioning to hopefully the, the new soon-to-be finance chair. I didn't elbow somebody just now, but hopefully, no, I just, and just wrap things up so that we could just have a seamless transition. I hope that we hear an update that we've given the materials over to CLA so that the audit can be completed. And so I look forward to seeing everybody on Tuesday in this room right here. I think that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. Next, Public Health, Safety, and Environment, Deputy Mayor Cindy Lloyd.
Thank you. And although it's late, my apologies for a lengthy report. I know that many people that cannot plug into the second Wednesday of every month for the Public Safety Subcommittee meeting looks for these numbers at times here. So I will be as concise as I can. Starting with Bloomfield Police Department, 31% down in August for crime compared to this time last year. Year-to-date down 27%. There was one Part I crime last month. There was a simple assault, a burglary whereby they know who the parties are and an arrest is in process. Larceny and shoplifting is down 41% based on the last report, and calls for service and arrests were down as well. For staffing, there's four open positions, which is consistent month after month. We get great people and then people retire and things of that nature. So we are in continuous recruitment, hint, hint. Four positions are open. Oral's are coming right now. We have two in the police academy who are progressing well. Traffic incidents have been down. Regarding citizen complaints in target areas, Maple and Burr had 19 details, 27 stops. Brown and Mills, 12 details, 15 stops. Granby and Toby, 11 details with 19 stops. There were no ordinance violations. As we know, noise has been a big problem in some of those areas. There were two citizen complaints. One was rescinded. One has been resolved. No use of force complaints regarding Bloomfield volunteer ambulance. They were very robust in their activities over the last month or two. They participated in National Night Out, conducted CPR classes, CPR public classes, as well as for private companies here in town. AMR paramedics are completely trained and coming up speed well. They are also getting familiarized and up and running with their civic plus account that has been created. Also, we have a lot of, a question came up, why do we think so significantly the shoplifting and larceny was down? And they have ramped up there. What I love is the proactive community policing, park walk and talk is what they call it in the shopping plazas and other areas where we may have a concentration of perceived larceny or real larceny. So that's great. They get out, they walk, they talk to people, they engage with the business owners. This is old school and it is effective. You create omnipresence. Deputy Chief Simone from Center Fire reported 40 incidents. There was a rapid response training. There was an authorized burn. There were seven accidents. They responded to four incidents, 17 false alarms, two mutual aid, nine hazardous conditions. They are actively, monthly, ongoing training. They did a training with Simsbury on the tanker shuttle drill and a cold water rescue training at the pool. Their public education and engagement in the community. They also participated in National Night Out, as did Blue Hills Fire. They attended a parade in Winstead, and they also had an event at the Dudley Town Brewery. Blue Hills reported 39 incidents, no major incidents. They had a response and command for a small electrical explosion, responded to a couple of motor vehicle accidents, a few fire alarms, false, a natural gas call as well. There was five dual or mutual aids, structured fire in a swim club, as we know from a couple of months ago. They have three new applicants in process. They do continue to do really robust recruiting in Bloomfield, and they are volunteers. That's worth mentioning. So we do have really good, robust recruiting and training. Community outreach, National Night Out as well, fire training in acquiring mines, daycare visit, Greater Wesleyan Church Health Fair, as well as they're planning mass casualty incident drill on 10/4. Of course, with Center Fire, where there'll also be hospitals, EMS, and other emergency responders represented. And I think that may be close to the end. We had a report from Blue, Bloomfield. They have a 9/29 meeting, so there was no report from them. The Health District has been active in the community as well. You can call them right now or go online. You are able to set up your flu vaccinations right now and high dose COVID. There's a schedule of dates and locations. It will be posted. They were also active with the food pantry and providing nursing services on Tuesdays, youth mental health, and storytime, healthy living workshops. They have been providing overdose kits to the community. There was a question about that, and the answer is yes, they do. They're also continuing Healthy Living Series with Sugar Rush Events. 9/12, they're going to do a naloxone training. And that ends the report for them. I'll briefly go over an additional report in addition to Sunday Conservation, Energy, Environment, and Committee. CEEC did not meet in August. There's going to be a Fall Shred Day on November 8th, 9 to noon. The location again is going to be at Bloomfield High School, Bloomfield High School as it was this past spring. And Ms. Guardiac, if I said that correctly, is working with the town on a drop-in event at the Town Hall parking lot on Saturday, September 20th, 10 to noon, where people can talk to fellow residents about their experiences with solar panels and electric vehicles in advance of the September 21st, Central Connecticut State University Sunday event. And I believe that ends my report. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Counselor McClary?
Yeah, to you, Mr. Mayor, to the deputy mayor. Did we have the Health Department check in on Manor House? Because I know at the last town council meeting.
So.
Sorry.
I will, I will address that. No, actually, that was another complex.
I just want to make sure that the Health Department is doing, and if not, then I'm sure, I have confidence in the deputy mayor that, that will get on her public safety agenda. But I think it's very, very important that the Health Department give us an update on the actions, the tangible actions that they've done to remediate the issues over there. Because we updated our housing policy over two years ago now, and we put in some teeth in that policy so that our housing, our public health department and zoning enforcement and everybody else could do what they need to do so that our residents don't live in questionable living conditions. So I just hope that we got that done. But I see the town managers.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. I was going to defer to you and say that within the last week or so, there's been a meeting regarding the Manor House situation with many constituents at the table. So, Mr. Town Manager, could I turn that over to you for a moment?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you for your tone, your question, Counselor McClary. I can tell you that that is correct. We have had a number of meetings to discuss where we stand with any type of concerns related to Manor House, as was reported to me by Amy, I believe it was last week. They are, they had received three complaints, but they had followed up on. And right now, we are putting into place a better mechanism of being able to enforce the fines that, that we impose. So very shortly, you should see some efforts along those lines as, as it pertains to all town ordinance violations that, that we issue from, from various departments, to include the Health District. So Health Department is on top of it and, and gave me that assurance when we last spoke. And as of right now, she had nothing of a significant magnitude or any concerns to bring to my or the town staff's attention. So that, that's a short synopsis of, of the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. So we move to Education, Workforce, Youth Development, and Community Services. We did not have a meeting this past month, and it appears that our planned meeting falls on a council meeting date. So I will be working with the Clerk of Council to schedule that next meeting. What I will speak about is a wonderful program that our Counselor Michael Oliver put together with the cooperation of Makerspace. They brought on seven young people from Bloomfield. They earned, I believe, their OSHA 10 licenses. And they were, I don't want to say shipped, they were bused to Makerspace in downtown Hartford a couple of weeks ago for the whole week and made approximately eight beautiful dog houses. So if there's any residents out there that are looking for, of course, the mayor would find out last. Okay, the next cohort. Well, that's a beautiful thing. Okay, I'm glad, glad. Well, that concludes, that concludes my comments. We will move now to council business. And the first item is our consent agenda.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Are those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. And we move now to new business. Consider and take act- Consider and take action regarding the appointment of the clerk of council. Ms. Latonya Tab with term ending November twenty-twenty-five.
Come on. Why not? Welcome.
We will have the actual swearing-in ceremony?
You solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as the clerk of council, the best of your abilities, so help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Latonya.
That was item twenty-twenty-six-eleven. We move now to item twenty-twenty-six-twelve. Discussion and possible action regarding the request for funding to finalize plan of conservation and development, P O C D. And we have the director, John Coleman.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I'm John Coleman, Director of Building and Land Use for the town. While it may appear so, this is not deja vu all over again. We did come before you a year ago to ask for some funds to, to work on, on the plan of conservation and development. That, at that time, we were just trying to get it to a point where we could begin to get it out for public dissemination and get it cleaned up. We have now gone through an extensive process of public input from the commission itself, from the Conservation and Energy Commission, from other boards in commission and from the general public. And we had a public hearing on it as well as required by state statutes. What we discovered, not surprisingly, quite frankly, is that the comments and recommendations we received were substantial and significant. And that if we want to produce and adopt a plan of development that reflects the vision and spirit of Bloomfield and is reflective of this town, we need to do a significant rewrite of the document as it now stands. We obviously want to get it done as soon as possible. And if it was to be done entirely, be done by town staff, it would be an extended process because of other work activities and responsibilities we have. So we're requesting funding to retain a consultant for a brief period of time to assist us in that rewrite so that we have a document that we're all proud of and reflects the vision and, and hopes of the town of Bloomfield and would request that you approve that funding so that we can move forward expeditiously. We think we can get it done in about five to six weeks. It's twenty thousand dollars.
I would so move. I really have a question. Where are we gonna take the money from?
The manager's memo, with all due respect, suggests the council contingency fund, not unexpectedly. So I guess that, I will pass that on as our initial request.
How much do we have in that? Does anybody know? How much do we have in that fund? Well, we have plenty of money there, so let's do it.
Any, any, yes, discussion?
Yep.
Counselor McClary?
Um, I am significantly disappointed with this item and I will not be supporting this item because about a year ago, or two years ago, when we went from the original consultant and it was brought up to us from the town attorney about the potential person who we have on the, the contract right now to complete the project. They went through the document and we asked them, what would it take for us to move forward? Were given to us and we, as a, as a body, was reassured that that fifteen thousand dollars at the time would get the rewrite and get us through the completion of the, the public comment and everything that they needed to do. Now we're being asked to give more money to this project. My question is, how much was the original contract for the original consultant that came in to do the P O C D?
The first consultant?
Yep.
I believe was, it was a ninety thousand dollar contract, of which sixty thousand dollars was for the plan of development and thirty thousand dollars was for, for the town itself.
And I thought the, was, am I correct that the fifteen thousand dollars that we, that we gave to them was to have them finish and clean up the document to do the rewrite? Because they, we felt as a town that we didn't get the product that we want. But because we missed the appeals process, we couldn't go after the original consultant to reimburse us, to give us the file. And Gorman New York at the time extended their contract that we currently have with them for fifteen thousand and they assured us that, that we'd get that done through public hearing and clean it up to produce to the public. What has changed?
Counselor, they did what we asked them to do. They did it completely. And we, we prepared a document that we could send out to the public and that document went out to the public and we had a public hearing. And the, and the results that came back from that were significant and substantial. That the folks that reviewed the plan suggested significant additional changes to the plan and that is to reflect the interests and vision of the town. And it was felt by those comments that the plan as presented did not do that. And the funds at this time are to incorporate the public's comments and recommendations so that the plan reflects the vision of the community.
I don't think it should come from council contingency. It can come from the manager's contingency. It could come from economic development. You got a consultant line there. I don't think this should come from the council contingency. We gave the money that we needed to give to them, but I do not support it coming from the council contingency.
Counselor Mahan? Counselor Mahan?
And, and I know I, I do agree with Counselor McClary. And it looks like Council Mayor was also kind of hinting at that as well. So I'd like to offer a friendly amendment for the funds to come from the town manager's contingency, if, if possible.
Is there a second?
To that friendly amendment, I don't know. That's contingent on the manager telling what he has in his contingency.
We ought to hear from the manager.
Yep, so before that.
Of course, I'm hoping he would chime in.
He has his hand raised. Town manager?
Well, thank you for an ability to speak about my contingency. I did develop my contingency with planned efforts of, of managing various aspects of, of programming that we have for the town. So to take this from my contingency, I, I can tell you that this will be a challenge at this time, but if you give it back to me, we can determine where we will be able to find the funding. So if you tell them, if you're telling me it's my problem to, to, to fund, then it's my problem. We will determine where that money comes from and, and not utilize council contingency.
That's fine.
Counselor McClary?
That's fine and I hope it doesn't come from any of the council projects that we have out there. So I just hope that you can find it where it is, but I, I can't, I can't support this knowing that we gave them fifteen thousand because that's the number they provided us and we asked them. And so wherever you find it from, just not council contingency.
Deputy Mayor Lloyd?
I withdraw my motion that says it comes from council contingency and say, well, leaving it up to the town manager to tell where it come from, but I would vote for doing it.
Thank you. Counselor Lloyd, I mean Deputy Mayor Lloyd.
Close enough. Thank you. Mr. Coleman, just a quick question for timelining. So we needed to move on because we did not have a robust product from our initial consultant. We get that. And it was agreed that we would spend an additional ten or fifteen thousand to secure Gorman and York, right? So when that happened, were the public hearings and the other input from other committees and commissions before or after they were secured, or was that input solicited after such that they did the work, they thought they got it right? But then after that additional public comment and input came, so they realized they could not proceed with what they had prepared?
It was after, but I would not, with all due respect, characterize it that they didn't get it right. They, they did what they were asked to do. The commission received it. It would be the commission's decision to decide whether or not it was sufficient to go out to public. The commission was, was anxious to get the project continued. So it did go out to the, to the public and all the reviews. All of the comments and recommendations came back and that's where we are now. But I would not characterize that the consultant did not do what they did. They did what we requested. But that was when, once the public reviewed it, it wasn't sufficient in the commission's eyes for a document that you would all be proud of.
In reference to them not getting it right, that was the initial consultant, not Gorman and York.
Okay, my apology.
No, no need for it. I just wanted to clarify for the public in case they thought they heard it that way. Definitely referring to the first one because we wouldn't have had to hire Gorman and York to do a cleanup job.
That's correct.
That's right. Thank you so much for the response.
Are there any other questions? Is anyone ready to move?
Are we going to table this until the town manager is able to identify the funding source?
I think so.
That's the question. We, we do want this to get done and we want it done right, but are, are we tabling this?
I move to table.
Second.
You have a question and then Counselor?
I withdraw my motion to table because there's no discussion during motion to table. So I withdraw that motion.
Okay.
Thank you. So through you, is, can we, you ask the town manager if he is willing to have that come out of his contingency?
He said no. He's gonna work, he's gonna work it out. He's gonna find it in some form or fashion, but that has not been determined yet. Did, did you have a?
I'm, I'm good. I'm good.
Counselor Mahan, you had your hand raised. Is that a legacy hand or?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm now leaning towards tabling as well until that, until where exactly the funds are coming from is determined.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
In favor of what?
Table into?
No, I, I'm not against table.
Aye.
Aye. So that motion is tabled. We move on to the next item. Which is twenty-twenty-six thirteen. Yes. Is it?
Oh, yes.
Wrong one?
Nope, you're good.
Yeah. Twenty-twenty-six thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding staffing a custodian for Prashia Library.
There's something I don't know here because we're, could I?
Sure, yes.
I, I asked for this to put on the agenda because at the time I understood there was no custodian for the new library, which seems a little ridiculous. It was cut out of the budget. When we were desperate to lower the budget this last year. And so we, we, that was my understanding. I learned today that we in fact do have one custodian during the week, but nobody on the weekend. So I, I don't know whose budget the custodian is paid from. Is it, is it? I, I, so I don't know the answer to that. So I think this ought to be tabled as well.
GPW?
I think probably if it's, if it's, is it a library employee or is it for?
So, Mr. Mayor?
I think D W.
Through to, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Mayor, all custodians or of maintenance, the public work staff, it goes through Public Works. So, and then I think Public Works charged back to the library, if I'm mistaken. I'm not sure, but I would like to move this item to finance for further discussion.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay.
So we'll put it on the Tuesday.
Turns out they do have one custodian.
Okay. Thank you.
So there's a motion on the floor?
So I withdraw the motion.
It's been withdrawn.
Second for.
Refer it, refer it to finance.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. The item is tabled.
Nope.
Or move, move to finance, excuse me. Okay. Next item, twenty-twenty-six fourteen. Discussion and possible action regarding staffing a senior accountant position for the Department of Finance.
This was also my, I asked for this to be gone. That was another position that was canceled by the town manager to lower his budget as we requested to keep it as small tax increase as possible. And it left us in a ridiculous position of continuing to be late with everything out of the finance department. And which has proven to be a problem that goes back almost ten years. And it's ridiculous that we're so behind on having our year-end audits. And it's strictly a manpower problem and we need accounts. We had no accountants here up until a year ago. Now we have one accountant, but we desperately, and we knew we needed another one. Now we need another one in order to catch up on things or even, even maintain them. So things are getting worse and forced on. It's just, it's just a lack of manpower or manpower. And so I, somehow we've got to crack that and nobody has disagreed with me. It knows the situation. And I.
Excuse me.
I don't know if you want to refer that to finance as well.
Excuse me, Council Mayor. Can we please keep all debate directed to the chair and avoid addressing one another directly? If there is any further discussion or debate about this amendment, let's continue. I'm sorry to have abruptly, abruptly dropped you, but continue.
Okay, well, I, I, I don't know after the custodian situation. Here, I don't know where that money is going to come from either. I suspect we need to, I would have thought that it could have been done by the department and if we, they run out of money, we have to make an adjustment at the end of the year, but I was asked to put on the agenda to have the council vote on it, so. But I don't know why, why it would require a council action particularly. So, but I would refer that one, I would refer that one to finance as well.
Second.
Counselor McClary?
Second, but I have a discussion. So my discussion is, I thought at the last finance or the finance committee before, we told the town finance director, because we asked about the consultants coming in to support. And we gave him the, the directive through the committee to come up with the plan to help provide additional support moving forward for the, for the audit. And so I don't know why asking for an accountant is back on here where through the budget season, we gave budget management software in exchange for this. It seems like the items that Council Mayor is putting on is increasing spending and it's not in the budget. And we're having a hard time because it's going to be a tough budget year. And we are only in the first quarter of the year and to continue to add additional expenses to the, the budget right now with staffing and benefits and OPEB and all this other stuff right now, I think is just a little reckless. But I look forward to having the discussion in finance.
Okay, well, that's all I was asking for.
Counselor Oliver?
Thank you, Mayor Harrington. Counselor McClary kind of beat me to the punch. I was curious that, what, what tasks does the software take care of? Does it take care of the tasks that we're looking for that would take place?
I wasn't talking about software at this point.
No, I mean, but if we're, if we're talking about hiring another accountant with the software, isn't that why we, we purchased the software?
No, we need somebody to put our accounting onto the software that we already have.
So are these different departments that are pushing their, I'm not saying that different departments are pushing their work off on Director of Finance, but is that something that each department should be taking care of their own, their own? In that, with that same software? In that, with that same software?
Thank you for the question, councillor. I wouldn't characterize it as departments pushing it off on finance. It is the way that the town is staffed and to my knowledge has been staffed. Departments have very limited, if any, finance staff in their department. So central finance bears the brunt of the financial work across the town, and we've not been staffed that way. Given the length of tonight's meeting, I'll save it for Tuesday to recount what I've said at prior finance committee meetings with regard to the town's financial operations. But no, the, the budget software is not taking place of an accountant. It's embracing technology for the budget development to get it away from a manual process that requires so much human manipulation. The senior accountant ask, as was done in the manager's proposed fiscal 2026 budget, is because, and it's actually stated in the memo in tonight's package, there, there are really only two people who, who work on the audit. And those two people are also running the Department of Finance and dealing with the day-to-day. Right? We're, and to councillor McCleary's comment, I don't believe it was a question about the temporary staff to help with the, get the fiscal 2024 audit done. That is also addressed in the memo in tonight's package with regard to the senior accountant as the finance committee was recommending to the full council approval up to $30,000 from council's contingency to bring in temporary staff to help accelerate the completion of the fiscal 2024 audit. We're doing that. But that's for the 2024 audit, right? As soon as we're done with the 2024 audit, we shift to the 2025 audit. But the funds are exhausted. So there is no more temporary staffing. What the town needs with regard to the finance department, which I agree with, similar to Public Works and custodians, is to be properly staffed or to recognize what the implications are, the results are of not being properly staffed, right? But to, to keep staffing low and then continue to demand that current staff do more than is possible is very irrational to me.
Councillor Mahan, just wait a moment. We have one relating to this particular question.
To that, to suggest that we are understaffed or don't have enough staffing. When I look at the concept, the, the latest, I think it's the 2023, 2024 comprehensive, well, 2023 Comprehensive Financial Report or Annual, however you want to say it, Financial Report, we have an increase in staff over the last 10 years. And so what I would suggest is that maybe the town manager, through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff, bring back the matrix study and look at if people are in the right area doing the right things. Because to say that it's ludicrous of the wording, preposterous that he used to have us not be staffed correctly and expect more things when we've added more positions to the town over the, since 2017. And every year we keep hearing, we need more staff, we need more staff, we need more staff, we need more staff for this, we need more staff for that. Maybe there's time to look at the holistic organization like we did in 2017 as a draft and look to make sure that people are in the right position. And if, do we need four people in, and I'm not calling out no particular department, but do we need certain part, the people, four people in department A and two people in department B? Maybe four people need to be in department B and four, two people need to be in department A, and you shift those positions as you can. And so I would recommend, what is that? Standardization?
Initiative.
Initiative can do this. To deputy mayor's point, the standardization initiative, maybe we look at extending that to look at whether we are staffed in the right areas and departments. That's all I want to say, because I can pull up and send it to India, the exhibit showing the increase in staff across the town.
Okay, and what I would say, if, if I, if you're, if you're finished councillor McCleary, I don't want to.
I am.
Disruptive. What I can say is I, I think you make a valid point in terms of where we may have increased in some areas. And, and perhaps there does need to be an assessment of the division of labor and how it is right now formatted for the town. But all I can tell you is we fell in on what we fell in on. So when the CFO speaks to an inadequacy of support in his department, he speaks to existing conditions, not what got us here. He speaks to existing conditions. When the, the director of Public Works talks about his per employee area of responsibility for custodial coverage is twice what's considered the best practice from national organizations, which, you know, each, each custodian should be responsible for about 18,000 or so square feet. And we have each custodian right now being responsible for 39,000 square feet. That didn't just happen overnight. It is what I fell in on and, and what we will get a better grip on. But right now, that doesn't negate the fact that right now there's a challenge in us achieving success with our present resources. So we're, we understand this is a much deeper dive conversation, but at the same time, I, I want to speak to where we came into the fight and, and our willingness to, to fight to ensure that things are leveled out as best as possible to ensure true efficiencies across the entire formation. So, so thank you for the opportunity to, to look into this and see where we're at. But right now, the, the frustration you hear from CFO Hill is based with what we're giving him to fight with right now, and it is inadequate based on where we presently stand. And, and that's not any shot at anyone on the dais. It's just a reality that we find ourselves in now.
Thank you. Councillor Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I guess this is probably a question for further down line because I do want to know how we plan on handling whatever the other outstanding audits. They've been perpetually late on these audits. So, so I guess leave my questions for, for a little bit further down in the.
Okay, thank you, councillor.
Yeah, I, I don't know where any records show that we have more in the town or in our finance department, at least that section of it, than, than we had before. That's not true. I know that's not true. We have three people left last year and three people came. In fact, I think somebody else left to change to a different department. So I, I don't know where that's coming from. It could be, it is true generally of town employees that we do have more, but it's not true in the finance committee. And we have been, that, that department's been a real problem for a number of years, and it goes back long before many people got here. So it's, it's not somebody's blame. We've been behind our odds for all in time. And we, we have this problem with us catching up on that. We've been trying to put that in for years. And it, it, it kind of fits up at the same time, and they're trying to stay on top of your day-to-day accounting. So it's, it's, we complain about the being behind, but we don't want to give them the staff they need to catch up. And I, I just think that's, that's a real, it's a real problem. And I, I would refer it to our finance committee as a.
Thank you, councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I believe that, you know, that staffing may be an issue, but I'm, I'm looking at it from a different point, from a point of, we have had turnover. And we've had turnover multiple times. You lose institutional knowledge with that turnover. I believe that some of the things that have been put into place will provide a benefit and a return, but it's going to take a while, right? So we can all sit here and say, you know, why is the audit late? Why is this not working? Why is that not working? Let's, you, you've thrown money at it. You've thrown money at it. I think that if we are, you know, patient, you know, to a point, that some of these things will improve. The job that folks are doing, first of all, I will say, is fantastic with what they've been faced with. They're doing a fantastic job with what they've been faced with. And so, you know, we don't do it, they do. And, and so what's, you know, coming out of there is, is good based on, you know, what I can see. And, and based on the fact that, as I, I'll go back to the beginning, the turnover. Let's let some of the things that we put in place, you know, come back to us. You know, because you keep throwing money at it, you're going to go down a rabbit hole and we'll be, you know. I, I just don't think that, that's a prudent move. That's all. At some point, we may need to adjust. There may need to be a look at the comprehensive staffing plan and the matrix plan of how all this is done. But, you know, you're going to throw more money at it? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Merritt?
Throwing money at is when we hire those part-time people, consultants to come in. It's very expensive, by the way. And they help us out and catch up a little, and then they leave. That's, that's a real loss of institutional knowledge. So it is important that we have full-time employees doing a job, not farming, coming in to rescue us. So I, I, I think, I think investing in people, long-term employees, is probably what the need is here. And we've, we've been trying, and I think you've been there, month after month. And we've been hearing, oh, yes, we're renewed, we're catching up, we're getting on top of it. And we hear this month after month after month after month. And they really find out they're getting further behind. We're further behind today than we were a year ago. And part of that's changing people. But I, I think we really need to deal with this.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
And let us not forget that when we were asked initially for this position, we were also endeavoring a very, very difficult budget season whereby our residents were hit very, very hard by the revaluation, the five-year mandated state revaluation that just exponentially increased their taxes. So we had to contemplate and indeed went in very, very lean. We did approve the software, and we'd hoped that that would be effective in moving the needle. But I just wanted to kind of remind us all about that.
Thank you. I just want to add that visiting homes throughout Bloomfield during this primary season, I've found more than a few residents expressing concern about our inability to process our audits on time. And obviously, there's a way to fix it. And this, in my view, is one way to, to move it more quickly. I know there's costs associated with it, but we have a public out there that is questioning our ability to get this done in a timely manner. And I know we have professionals here that are working hard as heck, but it's obvious they need more help. Councillor McCleary?
Someone who served as the, the chair of the finance committee for the last four years, I think the director was very clear that the people in the department just didn't do reconciliation at all. I don't think they didn't do the reconciliation for the previous year. It was like 18 months, journal entry. Yes, and it wasn't done. So you need more staffing. Well, that's why you guys have to manage the town through looking at the staffing plan. We can't keep adding more bodies. And it.
I'm sorry, I can't hear the responses.
Excuse me. I want to send this document to.
Excuse me, can, can we have an order, please?
Yeah, I want to send this document to India so she can present it on the screen. We are literally adding people. We started out with 169 people in this town on the town side. 169 people. We're approaching 187 people. And then we keep hearing taxes is too high. Where's the money coming from? And I see a member of the public shaking their head, but they're the first one on Facebook to comment that taxes are too high, misleading the community. Where's the money coming from? Do the assessment of, do we need four people in IT? Do we need three people in public, in, in the tax assessor's office? Do a, a matrix study? Look at where your needs are and appropriate the right amount of people based on the budget you have in the right areas. Just adding more people is just not going to solve the problem. Because then next year, social services is going to say, we need more people. Then Public Works is going to say, we need more people. Manage the staff and see if they're in the right areas. Well, take this up in finance. If the, if the director of finance is saying he need more staff, where's the money coming from? Simple, where's the money coming from? You got $30,000 you're about to need for plant and conservation and development? You want to add another janitor for, for the library? The manager is saying his $100,000 in his contingency is already taken? Where is the money coming from? Look at the budget. You guys just went through it. We all just went through a budget season. We all just was trying to save the concerts on the green. We were just robbing Peter to pay Paul. Where's the money coming from?
I, I don't know if that's a rhetorical question or just a frustrated statement or, or what. Are you looking for a statement, sir?
We could get that answer at finance. Where's the money coming from? Finance committee, this is committee work. We're having the discussion. It's committee work. Where's the money's coming from? Identify it, figure out how you're going to manage it and move forward. Because long term, it's not going to be the solution for every department that we need more staff. You got benefits, you got healthcare going up.
I have solutions that will impact services. I presented a number of them to you when we were dealing with this crunch last year. We can revisit that list, and we can, if we have the fortitude to execute, then we can do so. But at this time, we can't look at Bloomfield as if it's Bloomfield 1970. Bloomfield, as we know, is in the process of being developed. We have new neighborhoods going up. We have businesses that's coming here. We have services impacted by that. So we're experiencing growth, growth in service. We need services and personnel to deal with this growth. But we can have a very deliberate conversation in finance when the time occurs.
Thank you, town manager. I believe at, at this point, it's not going to be resolved through this discussion. And I move that we move it to finance for their direction.
Second, yeah?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we move to the next item, 26-15.
Same, move, move to finance.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Now, item, I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Move down seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any? Nays? Any abstentions? Okay. Moves to finance. 2026-16, discussion and possible action regarding the proposed ordinance 1812, fixed property tax assessments for real estate development. Yes.
I move to send the proposed, fixed, proposed ordnance, well, oh, this is the, this is not the tax abatement, this is the policy. Yes. Yes, um,
Public hearing.
This is the ordinance, right? Um, do we have that? I think we have that in our agenda packet, right? And I think I've read it and I have some notes that I want to, um, just address real quick. I would like, I don't know if the, the Finance, not Finance Director, the Town Attorney could, through you, Mr. Mayor, address how do we, uh, require a few things to be in this ordinance or should it be in the, uh, policy? Yeah, so I would like to see if we can require the applicants to provide a pro forma, um, financials or audited statements to verify claims. And so I would like us to articulate that in the policy. Um, I would like for us in the policy, uh, to talk about how we, uh, do a cost-benefit analysis and for a cost-benefit analysis to be done prior to us voting on a, um, tax abatement. What else did I put in my notes? A comparison, a comparison of scenarios, um, of the, of the abatement, show me a scenario, what the abatement, what the tax revenues look like and without the abatement, what it looks like. And then, I think for me, the, the requirement of the financial data disclosure, uh, is, is just very, very important. Um, when you're doing due diligence, I think it's important for, um, for us to make sure that we require, um, that those financial statements and, um, uh, those things are done. And I think I would like to see the policy limit up to ten years. I know the state statute says, uh, um, thirty, but I would like for us to specifically put it in to say that we limiting tax abatements, uh, to ten years. Um, and I think we can do fifty percent because you could do ten, ten years, you could do fifty percent, fifty percent, and then incrementally go down. This whole thing about eighty percent and coming in and setting their own, um, criterias based on their financial needs, uh, doesn't necessarily work for Bloomfield. So I think we should have a baseline, um, up to no more than a certain number percentage per year. Because, you know, we heard earlier that, oh, it was ten years starting at eighty-five percent when our policy, our recommended policy said up to five years, fifty percent. They just came in, presented their own proposal. So I would like to see that, um, in the updated proposal. So I don't know if Ashley, if those, any of those are in there that I, I mentioned. I didn't see it when I read it, but I would love, uh, some comments on the things that I said I would like to see in this updated policy.
Those are, sorry, those are not in there. I think that most of those are better suited to a policy. But, you know, the point of the ordinance is that it really is the backbone and the law. So what I wanted to do here is put everything, the base requirements in here. So if those are going to be absolute requirements, um, no matter what the circumstances, then we can put them in here and we can make that part of the ordinance. Some of those, like the up to ten years, up to a certain percent, I don't know if you want to put that in an ordinance. You can, certainly. And then if, if needed, you know, it would go through the whole process again, the amendment, the public hearing notice, discussion, um, and vote to change that. But ultimately, these are things that we can put in an ordinance. Although I would recommend some of them maybe be in a policy.
So, so I, I would love the financials. I think that's a, um, I think that is critical to be in the ordinance.
The pro forma?
The pro forma, the cost-benefit analysis, um, the IR, the IRR, all of, when you come and you ask for public subsidies, just as well as you go to a private bank or any institutional investor to, to, um, ask them for capital, you present financials. And they make sure that those financials, uh, are tight so that they can get their return on their investment. And I think the town of Bloomfield should do the same thing. Because I think our tax dollars are just as good as institutional investors' dollars. It's the same green and we should require the same thing, um, that they do when they're coming in for a tax fixing agreement. This whole thing of not having, not being economic development friendly because we don't want to give a tax abatement out, uh, doesn't make sense to me. Um, and we have to have some type of guideline because if the only guideline is that, oh, we're increasing taxes, then we'll be giving everybody a tax abatement. So that's my thought. I would love to see those in the, um, the ordinance versus the policy. Because then you won't have no, um, you won't have a consultant or anybody telling you that it is a guide or it's a recommendation. It must happen.
I don't think it's required to take care of that.
Uh, Counselor Cooper?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Counselor Merritt?
I, uh, I don't believe this item or the next one are required for us to deal with, uh, Arbella tonight. We're not, I, I, I can remember nine.
There are. This is not about Arbella.
Yes, I know. I'm, I'm just saying that. And I, I think, I remember nine years ago, having very long discussions and meetings about when and what rules we should have for incentives for companies to come to town. And we, we, we tried to decide which ones we, it depends on which ones we talk. What did you want? Which companies, what kind of companies do you want to come to town? It, it got into a very complicated and long discussion. And, uh, I don't think it's something that could be solved tonight. So that's what really is that you're talking about when you set up rules for, uh, a policy for, or ordinance, uh, for property tax assessments, fixed assessments or, uh, tax incentive options. So I, I think, I think it's something that's going to take a lot more time than we have tonight. I, I, I think we should table it, uh, to discuss a lot of your time.
Is there?
And, and move on with what is urgent tonight.
Mr., Mr. Mayor, I don't think we should table this because if we are going to handle and deal with the Arbella property, the Arbella, uh, group, um, has a certain timeline in order to get their tax fixing agreement done for their finances. And so in order to do that structure of a deal that we're going to do for Arbella, if I'm not misspeaking, we must update, and I'm sure Ashley can, uh, correct me, we must update our ordinance and our policy in order to move forward with the Arbella property tax fixing agreement, correct?
Well, so I think that's a big issue that we're going to talk about in the next item. But the current policy as it stands has produced a lot of confusion, specifically with regards to the schedule, um, and the use of the term guidelines and the minimums and the maximums. I, I cannot say for sure what the intent was back in twenty-seventeen when this was drafted, whether Section Six Abatement Schedule was meant to be a true guideline that could be exceeded or a guideline with set maximums. And if it's a guideline with set maximums, then it would need to be changed prior to making a decision on Arbella because it exceeds the abatement schedule set out in the current policy. But if it's just a guideline that can be exceeded, um, then it would not need to be addressed first because Arbella would be within the policy. So, you know, from my perspective, I think, I think it could be read either way, but I don't know what the intent was. And that, that's a big issue for me. And that is one of the reasons I would, I would recommend dealing with the ordinance and the policy now. Just to kind of clear that up and, and not have any questions.
Thank you. So I was right. Um, we must clear it up based on our legal. And so that's why I'm asking for us to, to clear it up.
Is there motion?
But I wanted some of the things that's in, to be added in the policy. Because once we, uh, pass this policy, it's going to take a while to go back and have the discussion. Um, and I think basically what we put in this agreement, I think Arbella already, uh, met those qualifications and those requirements. So it won't be a new thing. This, this will, um, apply to future developers coming in because they already met their CBA, they already met their, the finances that you heard from the town staff taking a review of it. So this won't hold them up, the abatement. Um, it won't hold them up with these updates. And so because we're opening this policy and this ordinance up, I would like to add that in so that any future developer that comes before must submit their financials, must do a cost-benefit analysis, must have the residence requirement that I think Council Oliver is going to speak on, et cetera. And so, um, Ashley, I don't know, um, how to go about that in the motion. Well.
So this would be a motion to, so, and I, I would tell you what I change right now. So, so first of all, um, for anyone who didn't, uh, get a chance to look over the ordinance and the policy closely, the ordinance tracks the policy. It just fixes inconsistencies and contradictions in law and it does not reference the abatement schedule. That's the big difference. Um, it references the state statute. So, you know, this is not a, a big change. I just want to say that. It's not, you know, we're not really changing the game of the policy. We're turning the policy into an official ordinance, um, but taking out the, the contradictions. So the change would be in subsection H. Prior to approving any agreement pursuant to the section, Town Council shall hold a meeting at which the applicant shall present information regarding the factors listed in subsection G. And then I would add, including pro forma financials, a cost-benefit analysis. I'm not sure if you want comparison of scenarios in there. I'm not really sure what that would look like. So I would perhaps, if, if that's okay, just leave it with including pro forma financials and a cost-benefit analysis. Um, and we can say a cost-benefit analysis, um, with respect to economic benefit to the town. But since it references subsection G, which, um, in, or section G, subsection A, economic benefit to Bloomfield, uh, that's kind of already built in. But, um, you know, I can, I can kind of do it anyway the council prefers. And so the motion would be moved to send the proposed ordinance to public hearing with the addition of including pro forma financials, cost-benefit analysis in section H.
Strong move.
What, and?
One question.
I, I had some more stuff. That's okay? I just, I just wanted her, so I'm going to just hold on to that, uh, attorney more. Because that's, that's, that's one thing. And then, um, for us to talk about, um, making sure that it's clear that you cannot ask for a retroactive tax abatement and it has to be on new investment. So like, not, oh, I built this project five, ten years ago and I need an abatement on it. It has to be on new investment, not on existing structures, right? So for example, if ABC Liquor Store comes in and they've been here for twenty years, they can't come in and say, I want a tax abatement on the existing building. They must say, unless they're a small business like Ms. Young, they must have new investment up to a million dollars unless they've meet that, um, that subcategory that, uh, the appendix document that we put together a couple of months ago. Does that make sense, attorney Moore?
So we should not use the addendum, um, because it, it doesn't quite track with state statute. And I, I don't think there necessarily needs to be a minimum investment, um, in the ordinance. I know it's in the policy. But I think when it comes down to considering economic benefit to the town and when you're talking about doing the presentation, the cost-benefit analysis, the Town Council is under absolutely no obligation to agree to this, this agreement, um, the fixed property tax assessment agreement. So if the investment is not high enough and it doesn't benefit the town enough and the cost-benefit analysis is not in the town's favor, then there's, there's just no obligation to enter into an agreement. So I'm not sure that a minimum has to be spelled out in the ordinance.
But what about the retroactive on an existing, you can't come in and ask for a retroactive tax abatement?
Correct. So, um, what I, I can do this several ways. Uh, one way is in section A to say pursuant to the authority granted by CGS, section twelve dash sixty-five B, as may be amended from time to time, the legislative body of the town of Bloomfield may, upon receipt of a written request in such format as determined by the town, agree to enter into a property tax assessment agreement on proposed development whereby some or all of the assessment increase resulting from new improvements made or that will be made to real property will be fixed.
Yep, that's a part of my amendment. Um, so I like that. Um, and then, I'm sorry, I just want to go piece by piece if that's okay.
May I ask you a question on that?
Want to say?
Before, before you move forward on that item?
What?
This is a specific one.
Excuse me. Uh, one moment. I know we have a lot of inquiries right now, three to be exact. And we're still finishing up with Counselor, uh, McClary. Can you?
Yep, I just have a few more that, because I'd like to go piece by piece so that everybody knows so that there's no duplicate questions. I think it'll help clarify it.
I just wanted to ask a question on the specific item that Counselor McClary mentioned before we moved on to the next op-ka. I know we're on this, he's going to mention a few other things, but before we move forward, I just want to ask a question on the specific change. Is, is that okay, Mr. Mayor? And Counselor McClary?
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I worry with it, uh, a bit that we, um, are taking some, some ability for decision-making away from future councils. I mean, for the most part, I, I haven't seen any applications come up for retroactive, um, abatements. I, I don't know if that will come up, but that should be something for a future council to decide. I don't know if we should tie it so, so closely. Uh, and we may not decide to do that, and I don't think we should. I personally wouldn't, but should we take that decision away from future councils?
Since that, this was on my time, do you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor, excuse me? Uh, absolutely. I've been elected to sit, uh, through twenty-twenty-five of November. Uh, and it is well and within my, uh, legislative, uh, powers that were granted by me when I raised my hand and swore oath, uh, to protect and serve the town of Bloomfield. And so guess what? There was a request that came into, um, our council clerk for a retroactive tax abatement. Um, and I think it's wrong. Um, and that's why I want to protect the residents of the twenty-two thousand people to make sure that something like that doesn't get through. And while we're editing this policy, absolutely. And as far as your concerns about future councils, if they want to open up the policy, guess what? They have just as much right, uh, that I have, um, when they're elected to do so. And so I don't see a problem with us doing this because we're here. And so I would definitely like to make sure, um, that, that retroactive piece and safeguard is in the ordinance, not the policy.
Thank you, Counselor McClary.
Thank you. And I, that concludes my comments.
Counselor Oliver?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Harrington. It, if this, if us tabling this would not affect the Arbella situation, I, I, I would, I would like to table this unless they feel like it's going to hold everything up. But there are still things that, um, I would like to review regarding that as well. You know, if it's going to be a, a big ask, I mean, Bloomfield, everybody is coming to Bloomfield. Like Counselor McClary has said in the past, you know, we have the most available land east of the river in the Hartford County area. Um, so people are going to be coming here. And if they're going to be coming here and investing in a Bloomfield, they need to, uh, not eat, not only invest for themselves, but invest for the residents. So, um, there are a couple of things I would like to see changed on that as well.
Thank you, Counselor Oliver. Uh, before I move to Counselor Cooper and?
Sorry, may I just jump in really quick? I apologize.
No, it, it's welcomed.
I just wanted to note that, uh, retroactive agreements are contrary to the statute. So I think we can just keep the, the language to make it clear in the ordinance.
Can we add later?
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Can we add more stuff then after or is this like finalized?
Oh, for the, uh, ordinance?
Yes.
That's up to the council. So if the council wants to move on it as it is or with a few changes, um, that we discussed tonight, it can. Uh, if, if not, if there's more work to be done, that's also fine. Um, I was just speaking specifically with the, with the retroactive, um, portion of it. But for all of this, it's, it's up to Town Council how quickly it wants to move on the ordinance. What I will say, um, is that for Arbella, again, it's, I would, I would recommend that the policy and ordinance be addressed beforehand just so that there's no questions. Because I think section six of the tax incentive policy is where we're going to have a lot of confusion and maybe disagreement about whether or not the, the proposed agreement for Arbella fits into the policy as it stands today. I think that's the open question, um, that we would be attempting to close.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Council Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I, uh, Turney, um, more, I do have a question, not, not a question, I have an ask, actually. Um, the thirty-year, uh, abatement is in the state, uh, statutes, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, um, for us, I, I think you may have said you wanted to, you thought that should be in a policy.
No, I, 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 sorry, I meant, um, any limitation should be in a policy. So, if, if you, I, I think that the terms, um, are typically things that, you know, different town councils might disagree on or change. And there might be certain circumstances where town council wants to go a little bit farther. So for that reason, I hesitate to put specific figures in ordinance and typically leave, leave it to the limit, um, allowed by state statute, which may change, and just have it that way. Because then we're also not, you know, stuck if the statute changes, and then we have a number that may or may not correspond with that, um. But that, that's the reasoning.
Okay, and so, I, I'm actually gonna push back on that. Um, I'm gonna use the, the line, uh, my colleague used. If a future council decides that they wanna change it, I, I'd like to see, uh, just a ten-year abatement maximum. Um, because we're then, right now, well within, uh, state statutes. And we can say ten years. Uh, but if it changes in the state, then we can change it here, or a council can change it when it's their opportunity.
Sure, and we can also use language like, um, you know, using the state statute as the limit, but in no event more than ten years. That way, if the state statute for some reason changes to less than that, which it probably won't, but in the event that it does, you'll still be covered and not scrambling to fix an ordinance.
Thank, thank you.
And I appreciate exactly the language that you used, um, if we could place that in the ordinance.
Thank you. Uh, I believe Councilor McClary has.
Um, I just, those, those changes, Ashley, um, if you could just read them off at the end after everybody, um, has, uh, put their edits in, I wanna put that motion on the floor to include those in this ordinance.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I believe we've had quite a bit of discussion. Council Oliver, I think that's a legacy hand.
It is, but I, it, it is, thank you, Mayor, it is a legacy hand, but I, I too would like to piggyback on, uh, what Council Cooper mentioned, you know, I really would like to take that thirty-year language rate out of there and max it out at ten.
Absolutely. Um, and just so you know, there's no thirty-year language in there, it just references the state statute, and the limit happens to be thirty.
Okay, if we could just make sure that that's clear, that we are not matching up with that thirty somehow.
Absolutely, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure I get that language in there, and then I'll read everything off, um, for everyone.
Uh, Councilor McClary.
Uh, so Ashley, I think that's it for the changes. Can you read them off so that we make sure we have, uh, everything that's gonna go in the town ordinance?
Okay, um, so the first change is in section A, it's three changes. And it's, it's really just a few pieces of language, but the change is pursuant to the authority granted by CGS, section twelve dash sixty-five B, as may be amended from time to time, the legislative body of the town of Bloomfield may, upon receipt of a written request in such format as determined by the town, agree to enter into a property tax assessment agreement on proposed development, whereby some or all of the assessment increase resulting from improvements to be made to real property will be fixed. In no event shall, and I'm still typing, but it will be in no event shall such an agreement exceed a term of ten years. Um, sorry, and then the second section that was changed is section H at the bottom. Prior to approving any agreement pursuant to this, pursuant to this section, town council shall hold a meeting at which the applicant shall present information regarding the factors listed in subsection G, including pro forma financials and a cost benefit analysis. And then that is the final change, I'm actually gonna say section C, section G. So I think those are all of the changes for discussion.
And I still move.
All those in favor?
Aye, and this is to the public hearing with those changes.
Yes.
Yes, this is sent to the public hearing.
Uh, Councilor Oliver, I'm sorry, I, uh, you and Council Mahan, I didn't hear, so I'm sorry.
Sorry, aye.
I wanted for aye, but there's still things I wanted to discuss later on, so I, I don't know if, are we locking ourselves into this right now, or is there room for?
Because it's going to hear.
It's going to public hearing.
Okay, aye, thank you.
Um, and feel, feel free to, you know, share what, what those changes are, and I'm sure there's a way we can incorporate them.
Okay, thank you.
Now we're missing one.
No, it's fine, we got a quorum.
And I will, um, send over a revised copy with all of the changes highlighted.
Okay, uh, the mayor votes aye as well. Um, we have one missing counselor, but we're, we still have a quorum, so, uh, this passes, and we can move forward to the next item. Which is discussion and possible action regarding updating the Bloomfield tax incentives policy for businesses, also known as tax incentive options, policy one-ten dot zero-three. Through any discussion.
Does this need to be decided tonight?
Yes.
Same, same situation where it has to go to the hearing?
It, it does have to go to hearing, but this is a little bit different in that I would recommend that this policy be canceled.
Why would you?
I, I'm happy to, so there, sorry?
Sorry, I just wanted to know, after all the work that is being proposed, are you, are you recommending it, it be eliminated and replaced with a new policy?
I recommend that it be eliminated and replaced with the ordinance, and then if a new policy need be drafted, it can be, um. And, and I, I'm happy to explain why that's my recommendation.
May you please elaborate on why?
Absolutely. Um, so when I was looking through this policy as well as the policy addendum, I noticed a few things that were pretty concerning to me. Number one is that the addendum conflicts with state law, um, and can't be used at all. The criteria are also different in the addendum than they are in the primary policy. And the schedule is also completely different. Um, when you look at the policy itself, again, the schedule has created a huge amount of confusion, um, and disagreement about what it means and how it should be applied and what the term should be. Uh, it also includes a section that says a public hearing is optional, that the council may or may not schedule a public hearing, and I typically recommend against the may, um, when it comes to public hearings, because I think that lends itself to, you know, i- if you are going to have a hearing for one, but not another, I think that can create some problems. Um, and the policy also requires a public notice and hearing for any changes to the policy, which is highly unusual. And it makes me think that the intent of this policy was to be quasi-ordinance. Um, not quite a policy and not quite an ordinance, and I don't really like middle ground. And the final thing is that in the ordinance, um, a majority of the policy is just replicated in the ordinance, but without the problems. So I'm happy to discuss, you know, section by section, or as much as needed. But my recommendation would be to get rid of this policy, because most of it is already reflected in the ordinance that will go to public hearing. Um, and then, yeah, absolutely.
Uh, we have, uh, Councilor Merritt.
I, I'd like to move that we, um, eliminate this policy, because it's, it's gonna be redundant anyway, because we're coming up with a, with an ordinance, so it's useless. And also is all the problems you listed, so I move that we, um, I have.
Now, there, Council McClary, you had a?
Yeah, I, 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 I was, I'll second that, but I'm not gonna support that motion, so I'll second it so we can get to the, the discussion, so we could be procedurally correct. So I'll second that motion. Is it time for discussion?
Yes.
Perfect, so, um, uh, Attorney Moore, quick question. So in the, the poli- in the ordinance, we don't have that a minimum, and I think this is where Council Oliver is getting to. Um, we don't have like the employment, um, requirements, we don't have the wages, we don't have the type of businesses, um, increase in the existing tax base. Uh, there are a number of things in this policy that's not covered in the ordinance, so to eliminate this, um, brings a lot of concerns. I know in the policy, uh, Council Oliver and I had kinda some discussions, and he wanted to do like, um, responsible contractor, if they're asking for a tax abatement, some other, uh, hiring goals, um, in there, and the ordinance don't, uh, 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 touch on that. So if we eliminate that, then that exposes us for anybody coming down the pipeline until we get an, a, a policy to not be required to do any of those things or, uh, seek to have those goals. So I'm not in favor of eliminating this policy. Um, I would like to update it so that it could be in accordance, taking out the duplicates. Um, but I think there are some things in this policy that are really, really good that we need to keep. And if you're suggesting earlier not putting it in the ordinance, we should put it in this policy and keep this on the books.
So I, mm-hmm, no, sorry.
Nope, and if they, the future body wants to continue to, uh, massage this in governance as we move forward to clean it up, I think they should do that, but to, uh, suggest entirely eliminating it, I can't support that.
So, um, I don't disagree that a policy would be beneficial. One of the main reasons for eliminating this policy is that it unnecessarily subjects to the policy to public notice and hearing, and it is mostly duplicative. So, you know, the purpose and objectives don't need to be in the ordinance, but the criteria and adjustments are in the ordinance. Uh, the definitions don't need to be because it doesn't really get into that. The general requirements are in the ordinance. The abatement schedule is purposely not in the ordinance, but that could certainly be in a policy. Um, and the application procedure is also more suited to either a policy or even just internal documents. Um, and then review and approval is in the policy, or in the ordinance, excuse me.
So is it possible to strike all the things that you think should be taken out of there, strike it, and then just leave the policy with the things that you think should stay, and then they can use that as a starting point to continue to massage it as we move, move, move forward?
Yes, that would also be fine, we can certainly strike everything, um, that is duplicated in the ordinance.
And, yeah, cause I, I think adding, like, instead of, uh, may, you can add shall do a public hearing, et cetera, et cetera.
I do have that, yes.
Yep, so, yeah, so I would, I would add that friendly amendment, that's fine, to the motion, um.
Zero second.
Um, the, the one thing I will say though is that does, it will have to be updated in the future. Because the, the abatement schedule, I would, I would recommend that the abatement schedule, um, be taken out of the policy. And I would also rec- recommend that the addendum be eliminated entirely, because it's not compliant with state law.
Are you going to go through this and strike those things out?
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
And then we can have it for the hearing.
Okay, that works.
And then I have a question, Mr. Mayor, through you. Um, how does that affect past previous, uh, uh, entities in town who we passed a, abatement for, based on that addendum written by the consultant? And town staff.
There were no agreements subject to the addendum.
But we passed the motion in October, November of last year, um, for Cottage Grove Circle LLC. Um, and so where does that leave us there? Do we have to go back and make a, do we have to revoke on that tax fixing agreement?
I believe, I would have to double check, but I believe that the motion at that time, I think that was in December, that, that Cottage Grove was voted on. Um, and I believe the motion was to enter into an agreement with Cottage Grove. And I, I believe it was that big, I, I would have to double check to confirm that, but I believe it was simply to enter into an agreement. Um, and if that is the case, then no further motion is needed. Um, because the only motion was to enter into a, a tax fixing agreement, which can still be done, just not subject to the addendum.
And so, so she's, that organization is fine with their tax fixing agreement, we don't have to do anything else. They'll have a tax fixing agreement based on the updating of this policy.
I don't know. Um, that, that is a discussion that will have to be had, um, whether that makes sense.
Okay. So I move the adoption of moving this to public hearing. What the changes?
Okay, okay. I'll, um, I'll do the strikeouts, and I will note, um, all of the changes as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well, so the motion passes. Uh, item twenty-two-six-eighteen, discussion and possible action regarding requests for tax abatement at the Arbella at Blue Hills. Councilor McClary.
Thank you so much. Um, I wanna thank the town staff, I wanna thank, um, our consultants, I wanna thank our town attorney, I wanna thank the mayor, the deputy mayor, Council Oliver, myself, the town manager, and the whole team, uh, who worked on this, um. Public policy can be really, making the sausage could be really, 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 really difficult, and sometimes uncomfortable, but I think, um, ultimately, our job, as Council Oliver said, is to make sure that, um, Bloomfield residents get the best possible deal, um, when we're talking about their tax dollars. And I believe, um, the Arbella property and their representatives did a really good job, um, working with us, uh, to get to, um, an agreement, and so I would like to move, uh, that we move, uh, the Arbella property, well, excuse me, we move the request for a tax abatement at Arbella at Blue Hills to a public hearing.
Second.
I have a friendly amendment to that?
Yep.
Um, I would like to move to amend the motion to include that prior to the execution of the contract agreement, the details related to Bloomfield Construction Companies and Workers participate required ten percent of the construction value of the seventeen, seventy-two million, uh, shall be finalized in the consortium between, uh, with the Workforce Education Development Committee.
I guess I can accept that to move to that to public hearing, I would accept that moving that to public hearing, that friendly amendment.
And I second it.
I- is that something that's been agreed to by Arbella?
That's the, my understanding, it has, that's the ten percent on that slide of the, I think to the mic, so, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
Um, I, I think this was the point we were talking about earlier, about, um, uh, whether it should be employees, or whether it should be businesses, and I think the general thought that was, uh, having it ref- uh, referred to businesses provided, provided a broader uh, overall benefit. So I, I think that wording is different than what we had discussed earlier. Yes.
I thought my understanding of the friendly amendment was that you would discuss what that looks like, right? And that basically, is it the business or is it the employees, and that we, we have a, or any combination of it, that we have conceptual, like, ideas of what that, uh, community benefit agreement looks like, and that you guys will work on the details and workforce and development before the execution of a signing of a tax fixing agreement. So, I think it's still to what you're saying, but how that combination is, is it five percent businesses and five percent employees, or if it's seven percent businesses and three percent employees, both groups have to agree on it before the execution of the tax abatement agreement. I think that was my understanding where we left off and where, um, Council Oliver left off. If, if I'm wrong, just Council Oliver let me know.
That's the way I took it, that we were gonna handle and iron out the details in workforce development.
But we, we did say Blo- Bloomfield business, but I thought they understand, it was the, of the cash value, but then we were gonna break down whether that was. because he had the issue with employees and workers, and so I thought we left. And Attorney Crumb, you can help me. Yeah, I thought the, there was an issue with that. And so that was to move forward under the contingency that that be worked out in workforce and development.
Okay, well, what I, where I thought we landed on it was that as it was worded, ten percent of
Bloomfield-based businesses.
Costs, yeah, would be for Bloomfield-based businesses, and that then some a final agreement would be worked out and what some of those terms mean would be defined in that agreement.
I thought that was what the friendly amendment was. Is that correct, Council Oliver?
That's the way I took it, that it was ten percent of the seventy-two million dollars.
Right. I thought he was suggesting something specific in this amendment that changed that ten percent, that was talking about jobs specifically, where I thought we were saying that we weren't going to mention jobs. Currently, we were just going to talk about ten percent of the cost.
Yeah, the cash value of the seventy-two, the seven, if the project is seventy-two million, that ten percent of that would go to Bloomfield Business. And my understanding of the contract, the discussion was that Council Oliver had some concerns about like workers in the apprenticeship program and whether the Bloomfield-based business would be Hartford, Greater Hartford, or and then Bloomfield, and then I think the deputy mayor said, well, what if we do a pro-rata, a rash, a pro-rata of this and that? And I said, well, we have a we have an agreement that it's going to be ten percent no matter what, whether it's ten percent towards the seven point, the construction costs, or if it's, it turns into three percent of the construction costs and seven percent of the actual workers on the job, then however you guys break that down and workforce, you can. But if you're saying that you think it's the ten percent of the base business and you're promising, you're saying on record that you're committed to ten percent of the cash value of construction, I'm fine with that too.
That's where I thought we ended, and then again, saying that we have to, there were a number of terms that just were, you know, bullet points that need to be clarified as you'd see in a full-blown agreement. So I'm just, that's what I recall where we ended.
Council Oliver, are you
You go ahead and amend it in the wording that you think works, Ken.
So I think the ten percent of the Bloomface-based business, and you would have the discussion with Council Oliver and the Workforce Development Committee on what that looks like, correct? And so that's what I would like to add in there, that before any tax fixing agreement is done, that the discussion with Council Oliver and the Workforce and Education Committee should be done before the execution of a tax fixing agreement and the signature of the tax fixing agreement, a positive recommendation from that committee. Is that?
Counsel Lloyd.
Mr. Mayor, can you report out when is that next meeting?
Well, we're going to have to do a special meeting. I do not have that date as we speak because the next date is a council meeting, and so we can't do it then. Right. And the next council meeting is, what, October fourteenth? Right. Counselor McCleary.
So I'd like to get things on the record. I just want to make sure I'm clear. So we're going to move the tax fixing agreement to the public hearing. We have the public input, and then if it moves through, the goal is that Arbella Workforce Development, Council Oliver, the town manager and staff will have a discussion on that ten percent of Bloomfield-based business and the cash value versus employees, correct? Perfect. And so that's what that means, okay? Everybody's on, want to call it? Council Oliver, are you good?
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I'm so happy to get this through. We get more affordable housing. We get a net extra two hundred thousand dollars per year.
Are you ready to move?
And we get a million dollars extra.
Call a question.
Call a question.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. And the mayor votes aye as well. We have to determine.
Wait, no. Hold on, let's make sure.
Six days will we talk to our
Six days from today.
Can we do that?
That's the lead time necessary for notice.
Tomorrow.
What's on the nineteenth?
I can't hear, I can't hear anything.
The policy should be addressed prior to the agreement being addressed.
Yes, nineteenth is a Friday, and then the following week is High Holy Week for Rosh Hashanah. So I know, but I have to publish in a paper, so I can't put in a paper publication until the fifteenth if I send it tomorrow. So it will have to be in the paper for those five days and then the hearings held after that, so I'm not going to meet that. No, it's all three of these days.
And then the thirteenth is a holiday, correct?
October thirteenth is Columbus Day, so we usually have a council meeting on the October fourteenth day. But we're trying to get the public hearing done within the month of September. So hang tight, one second.
We can do virtual. It's a special meeting.
Mm-hmm.
We can do all virtual. Because I think those are going to be the only items on the agenda. I don't want to talk. You're in control, sorry.
Okay. We're looking at September twenty-fifth for the special meeting. Zoom only because council chambers will be occupied by TPC. All in favor? You have an acceptance of that?
Aye, yeah, aye, aye.
Okay. Six o'clock works.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
The deputy mayor votes aye. Opposed abstentions. Okay, we will set that special meeting for September twenty-fifth at six P M. Thank you very much.
Yay. I think this next two items is executive session.
And moving on in the agenda, I believe we are at twenty twenty-six dash eighteen.
Which, I believe
Nineteen, twenty twenty-six dash nineteen.
Aren't those being covered in the?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Okay, so nineteen twenty will be an executive session. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Lloyd. So we will move to the report from the town manager.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Citizens of Bloomfield as well as staff who may still be in attendance. I'll be brief as the hour is late. A lot of good things to always report on, but in regard to the turf situation that Counselor Cooper had mentioned, I am in the process of having a meeting set up so that we can do that cost analysis that was requested of the comparison between turf and artificial turf and, and natural grass. So once I have that meeting, I'll be prepared to report on that. Once again, just being very, very quick with this late hour, I wanted to thank the mayor, deputy mayor, and council for the proclamation that was provided and read to the family of Ms. Barbara Williams by our deputy mayor last Friday. It was a heartwarming celebration of life that occurred. And if you don't know, Ms. Barbara Williams was a longtime employee of the town of Bloomfield as the H R director and touched many lives, present staff included, and it was our honor to, to provide our venue here, where at three thirty Park Ave, where she spent many hours as a retiree to, to just enjoy and all things Bloomfield. As I had mentioned at our governance meeting, we do have our, our new town clerk. You saw her in action tonight as she swore in. Our new clerk of council, our new county clerk is Ms. Andrea DeStefan, and we welcome her. And looking forward to years of her dedicated service to town of Bloomfield. And we already welcomed in Ms. Latonya Tab, and once again, I, I know she will serve Bloomfield well for years. Reminder to all that the Food Truck Festival will be occurring here in the center of town this Saturday from four to eight, so look forward to some activities of fun and entertainment at that. Please come on out with your families and, and enjoy in this event, which is one of the, the last event on the town green for, for this year. So for this good climate year. So I appreciate if we can have everyone out there just enjoying the, the efforts of Ms. Vera Smith and the Chamber of Commerce and bringing, and spearheading the effort to bring this to our deserving public. Before I conclude with a, well, I've got two more thoughts, and first, I'd like to let the council know that today was the kickoff of our Empowering Leadership Program. That's a program where we have developed a program to tap the excellence of our present workforce to create leaders of tomorrow. And today was the inaugural event, and I tell you, I couldn't be happier with the day one of this event. It's going to be a twelve-week program and stand by because once those, once this first cohort graduates, I do plan to have them before the council for recognition of an extraordinary achievement and leadership development. I'd like to again thank the council, our dedicated staff of Mr. Hill, Mr. Coleman, the Crumbie Law Group, Coleman in York, and Mr. Jeff Smetana for your efforts in getting us to a point of success with Arbella. I know this has been a long, arduous process, but I think we'll all agree that this is well worth the effort that we put into getting this here. I know we're not quite there yet, but we're closer than we ever been, and that's because of the outstanding leadership of council. I appreciate everyone who was here to make that happen, spearheaded by our mayor, deputy mayor, and Counselor McCleary and Counselor Oliver. I thank you all for getting us in this position. I'd like to close tonight by, by saying best wishes and prayers, blessings to Ms. India Rogers, who will be going on leave for an extended period of time to deal with a personal care matter. She will be out of our fold for over a month. She will be missed dearly. And so please keep her and her family in your thoughts and prayers as she, as she goes through this chapter with our full support. Subject to your questions, Mr. Mayor and council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. And the next item is report from the mayor, which I currently have no report. That will be forthcoming at our next council meeting. But I would also like to extend my heartfelt thanks for everything Ms. India Rogers does for us, and we are certainly going to be praying for a swift and complete recovery.
Thank you, India.
And at this moment, we will move to executive session. Oh, oops. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We are going to meet, we're going to keep council comments to one minute each, if that can be done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any exceptions? It wouldn't be right if it wasn't, so.
Like, come on.
We love you, though. Motion passes. We will go move to executive session.
No, we, no, council comments.
Thank you, council comments to a minute.
Give us at least a minute.
Yeah, I'll play a game.
Shamar, Counselor Mahan, you can start us off.
All right, thank you. Let's start the minute now. First, one, I do wish India the best. I, you know, thank you very much for everything that you do. You've been absolutely like the glue for the council. And the glue, the, our sense of direction. You've been our like northern star. I appreciate, I appreciate everything that you do, and I hope for your absolute health, your best health and speedy recovery is what I heard. I'm not too sure what's going on. I'm not going to dig too much into your business, but I just wish you the best and I hope to see you again soon. Congratulations to those that had their electoral victory on, on the primary day. And thank you, Bloomfield, for coming out and making sure that you make, that you have your voice heard. We can't do this without you. We can't govern without your blessing, so thank you for all the residents that came out to vote, and that just made their voice heard overall.
Thank you. And next we will have Counselor Ted Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to also say thank you so much, India, for, you know, all the work you do for this council. Since I've been here, you have been, you know, stellar, and I really do appreciate everything you do and the work you put in, right? And so, and also say welcome, Tanya, to the House of Bloomfield. It's a great place to be. And I hope that you, you know, enjoy your time here and learn some things because it's, it's an awesome process to, to serve our community. And I also want to wish those who have successfully primaried and are going to be on the ballot for November, and that goes out to, to everyone, and also to those who ran and of course did not make it, but I wish you well on the hard work that you've put in and thank you for making us work hard.
Thank you, Counselor Cooper. Counselor Oliver.
Thank you, Mayor. India, you know, you've, you've been the like Counsel Mahan said, you've been the glue that's holding us together. You've put a lot of work in, you know, more than you probably should have. like Counsel Mahan said, you've been the glue that's holding us together. Um, you've put a lot of work in, you know, m-more than you probably should have. Uh, you know, especially with uh, me coming in and learning uh, the new way, the, you know, just the whole thing with council. And you know, you put me in the right direction. You've guided us, especially with the trades program. You put a lot of work in as well. I just want to, you know, tell you that I wish you the best, and we can't wait to get you back around. Um, and Latonya, thank you for stepping up to the plate and um, taking on these new tasks. So uh, welcome to Bloomfield, and uh, we're one big family, and we might, we might go at it here and there, but we all have the same great intentions for the town. So just don't lose your way.
Thank you. And you beat the clock.
I usually do.
Counselor Merritt.
Uh, just to offset those who, who didn't beat the clock, I'll be even briefer. Uh, thank you, everybody. I, 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 I appreciate the citizens coming out for the primary, and uh, I, I, I'm glad that's over, and I'm, I'm glad this meeting is almost over. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor LeMclery.
I'm gonna beat the clock. Thank you, India. Welcome, um, the new council clerk, Latonya. Um, thank you for, to the town staff. Uh, thank, congratulations to my colleagues up here. I am so happy that I pushed for the additional affordable housing, and that we're soon going to get a deal. Uh, it is very important to make sure that every tax abatement agreement, you have a community benefit agreement, because there's no such thing as free lunch, and everybody will tell you that their increase in taxes, revenue on Bloomfield, because that's what development do. When they ask you for a tax abatement, you protect your residents. Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, and I am done.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Cindy Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Seconds spare.
Okay, I started my, my own clock. Um, thank you, residents. Yes, everyone that came out and voted in the primary, everyone that exercised their civic right to vote. Thank you so much for coming out. India, thank you for all that you've done over 18 years as a clerk of council. Um, yeah, you, you gonna stop emailing people at 1:00 AM, because I'm up reading it. And that's another problem. Welcome, Latonya. It's so good to see you here. I'm sure that you'll do great things as well. Um, and then just to respond to a comment earlier about a complaint uh, for SEC. Um, I'm happy to report that I, I do respect um, anyone's right to challenge behaviors that they think impede upon people's voter rights, or that may create a violation. And I'm happy to report that that distance has been measured, and it well far exceeds 75 feet. So fear not. Um, I think everything will turn out just fine. But I do appreciate um, his right to be able to exercise his concern. So thank you for all of our concerned citizens, and have a good night.
Thank you. And from myself, I just want to thank everyone again for coming out and voting. And also, once again, to acknowledge uh, India Lloyd, who basically has worked with each of us on every level. Did I say, oh, I said your daughter's name?
Alvin is doing now. You got it from Alvin.
Listen, uh, folks, she, India Lloyd used to sing in our band many years ago when she was 16 years old. So her name is stuck in my memory. But India Rogers, we love you, and we want to make sure that uh, you are in the best of care in hand. So keep in touch with us. You don't have to call us. I know you're going to be fending us off from calling you, but but uh, really, I just want to thank you for all you do. Thank you. And at this time, we will move to executive session.
Someone will second.
Excuse me, Mayor. Mayor, you have to announce everyone that will be in executive session.
Okay, so our town attorney will be in execu-executive session. And town council. Do I need to identify, and our town manager?
Deputy Town Manager.
And a deputy town manager?
Anatasha.
And Anatasha Kinglin. Is there anyone else?
And is Attorney Moore going to be on?
Attorney Moore.
Attorney Moore? I'm not sure.
Just put her in there. Yes, I'll, I'll be in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the mayor votes aye, motion passes. We move to executive session.
India, you're gonna make me the host, or you're gonna make um?
Have a separate link or just the link?
Me. India?
This is a man. This is gonna be, be considered bad.
India? Can you hear me, India? She can hear you. Okay. We still have two attendees in there. We need to get out.
Is that me and Shamar?
No, there are two non-town staff that are on the attendees panel, still sitting, I mean, on the attendees list. We need to remove them. Okay, they're gone. And I think the recording is still on. We have to stop it. Or pause it. No recording. I can't stop it because I'm not.